Are we good to go? Excellent. Okay, let's start. Welcome to the third hearing of the committee inquiry into the appointments of Josh Murray, the appointment of Secretary of Transport for New South Wales and Emma Watts as New South Wales' Cross Border Assistant Commissioner and senior executives and department liaison officers in 2023. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Ora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we're meeting today, and I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today or watching from the live stream. My name is Abigail Boyd and I am the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses may say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. We now start with our first witness, welcome. Could you please state your name and position, title, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation?
Thank you, Chair. Katharina Lowe, New South Wales Public Service Commissioner. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lowe. Is there an opening statement you would like to make?
Yes, I do have an opening statement. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to make an opening statement and to assist the committee with its inquiry. I would like to take this opportunity to briefly summarise the legislative provisions that apply to secretary appointments. These are set out in Section 23 of the Government Sector Employment Act and Rule 52 of the Government Sector Employment Rules. Under the GSE Act, the Premier has the power to appoint secretaries and may delegate this function to the Secretary of the Premier's Department. There is discretion to make a direct appointment to a secretary role or to undertake a merit process. If it is decided not to make a direct appointment, this does not trigger the requirement in GSE Rule 17 to conduct a comparative assessment. GSE Rule 52/4 provides that part three of the rules within which Rule 17 sits does not apply to secretaries. There is therefore significant latitude in how any recruitment process for a secretary role is conducted, given there is no prescribed process. Before appointing a person as a secretary, GSE Rule 52 requires the Secretary of the Premier's Department to consult with the Public Service Commissioner and the senior responsible minister and to provide a report to the Premier on the proposed appointment. In relation to the appointment to the Transport Secretary role, which is the subject of this inquiry, it was decided to not make a direct appointment and to instead undertake an open merit selection process. The role was publicly advertised, an executive search firm was engaged to conduct a local and international search, an assessment panel shortlisted candidates for interview, and an evaluation panel interviewed the shortlisted candidates. While a comparative assessment was not required under the GSE rules, the evaluation panel did use three capability-based assessments, namely an interview, a scenario presentation, and a psychometric assessment. Referee checks were also undertaken. Neither the minister nor her office gave a direction or made any suggestion to me about who the evaluation panel should interview or what our recommendations should be. To my knowledge, no such direction or suggestion was made to any other member of the evaluation panel. The evaluation panel acted impartially, objectively, and in good faith in assessing the suitability of the candidates for appointment. The panel's report reflects our unanimous view regarding the candidates. The GSE rules do not require a panel to rank candidates for a secretary role, nor do they prescribe the descriptors to be used in a panel report to compare candidates. In this case, the evaluation panel considered that two candidates were appointable. The Secretary of the Premier's Department arranged for the minister to meet with both candidates. The Secretary of the Premier's Department was the ultimate decision-maker on which candidate to appoint. In relation to other elements of the inquiry's terms of reference, I note firstly that I was not involved in the appointment of the New South Wales Cross Border Assistant Commissioner. Secondly, I do not have a role in the appointment of departmental liaison officers. This is a matter for each department. My involvement in relation to the Transport Portfolio DLOs was limited to receiving several verbal updates from the Chief People Officer about the progress of an investigation into the actions of a particular DLO. Lastly, my involvement in relation to the creation of the Transition Office in Transport for New South Wales was limited to providing verbal advice to the Chief People Officer on the practical application of Section 26/4 of the GSE Act. This section provides that in exercising their employer functions, a secretary is not under the direction or control of a minister. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a copy of the opening statement for the team.
That would be very, very useful, thank you. I'll just ask you one quick question and then I'll hand over to Mrs. Ward to kick us off. Just, it's very useful for you to set out there the applicable legislation in relation to the appointment of the secretary. Can you just explain for the committee where the boundary is in terms of what a minister can and can't do, I guess, in relation to the appointment of departmental staff?
So, do you mean in relation to the recruitment of departmental staff or generally?
Yes, no, so the recruitment.
Okay, in relation to recruitment. For secretaries, the position is different than other senior executives and non-executive staff. I think it's useful if I could ask the committee to, I guess, turn its attention to Section 25 of the GSE Act, and it provides some useful context and background in relation to that relationship between the secretary and the minister, and I think recruitment there needs to be seen in that context. So, Section 25 of the GSE Act starts by saying the secretary is responsible to the minister, and then it goes on to say that the secretary works closely with the minister to ensure the delivery of the government's policies and programmes. The secretary is responsible for assisting the minister to fulfil their ministerial accountability obligations to Parliament by providing factual information. The section also talks about the secretary being the principal official policy adviser to the minister, and the section also talks about secretaries providing frank and fearless advice to the minister. So, I think the point I'm trying to make there is that under the GSE Act, the secretary has a unique role, and to be able to perform effectively in that role, the minister would have to have a high degree of confidence and trust in whoever holds that role. And then I think we then see the sections relating to secretary appointments in that context, and hence the requirement to consult with the minister.
Just to clarify, so, thank you for that. My question is in relation to, I guess, the other parts of the terms of reference now of the inquiry, and in particular, the sort of the appointment by the secretary as employer, as I understand it, of department staff.
Yes.
What are the limits on a ministerial sort of involvement, I guess, not just the minister but the ministerial office in that appointment? Can they suggest people for employment? Can they direct employment? It's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand the legal restrictions on.
Sure, I understand that. So, as I said during my opening statement, Section 26/4 of the GSE Act provides that when secretaries exercise their employer functions, a secretary is not under the direction or control of a minister. So, I think it's a little hard for me to sort of comment in the abstract or to comment on hypotheticals, but I think to be prudent, what I would say is that ministers and ministers' officers should allow secretaries and departments to undertake recruitment processes and that that process be at arm's length.
Thank you, that's very useful. Mrs. Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lowe, for coming today. One of the people that is assisting the committee and is coming to the inquiry, so we appreciate that and appreciate you being here today. Ms. Lowe, have you familiarised yourself with the terms of reference for the inquiry?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so it's about the circumstances leading up to the appointments, the process undertaken to make the appointments, and the probity and integrity measures undertaken as part of the appointments, among other things which are there for everyone to see. Ms. Lowe, you'd be aware of the critical role of integrity and transparency, the roles that they play in the recruitment and appointment of people to positions in the public service?
Yes.
Based on your understanding of the process for this appointment, that is in relation to the appointment of Josh Murray as secretary, we'll get to the DLOs later, based on your understanding of that process, do you agree that Ms. Halen participated in some form in the decision-making process?
She was consulted during the process. Whether that sort of fits your definition, I'm not sure, but she is required to be consulted under the GSE rules.
And she made her view known after that consultation, that's correct, isn't it?
Yes, so the Secretary of the Premier's Department sought her views on two candidates after meeting with those candidates, and she provided a view.
Yeah, it's, it's not a trick question. She participated in some form in the process, whatever form you want that to be. And had some input into that decision-making in expressing a preference about one candidate over and above another.
Yes.
Okay. How do you, as Public Service Commissioner, define a conflict of interest?
I think it would very much depend on the circumstances, but in broad terms, it's about when your personal interests might conflict with your public duties.
So, how, and that's set out in a number of documents and obviously precedent, but in your role, you'd be very familiar with that, I would have thought?
Yes, it's set out in the Code of Conduct, for example, for public servants.
Okay. So, do you agree that above any formal conflict of interest framework, there sits ethical considerations that senior public servants are required to comply with or perform to?
Yeah, so in the GSE Act, there is an ethical framework. It sets out the core government sector values of integrity, trust, service, and accountability, and beneath each of those, there are some principles about how you would bring those core values to life.
And you would deal with those, I would have thought, very regularly and have those top of mind in your role and expect those in other public servants, would you not?
Yes, so the Public Service Commission obviously has a Code of Conduct, which then applies across the government sector and through various mechanisms. We bring that Code of Conduct to life and, and work with other agencies to promote integrity and the other values.
Thank you. So, that would be, in a sense, that public servants have a higher duty beyond the legislation. We've seen what's in the legislation, but there's also the requirements of the ethical framework. So, as a matter of policy, the ICAC says that in regard to conflicts of interest and managing them in the New South Wales public sector, that, and I quote, "Personal interests that could conflict with public duties include people who are more than acquaintances and connections to people who have given benefits or favours." You'd be familiar with that, would you not?
Yes, and, and our Code of Conduct talks about conflicts of interest.
And so, as the agency with some moral and legislative responsibility, you've talked about both this morning, acknowledged both, so as the agency with that moral and legislative framework both in place for public sector recruitment, do you agree or disagree with the ICAC definition?
I'm not disagreeing with the definition.
Okay. So, you're clear that the ICAC definition would work alongside or with the Code of Conduct? It's something that has, you would have to have regard to?
Yeah, it's not inconsistent.
Thank you. So, was it your understanding throughout the recruitment process that candidates would be put to the minister for her view prior to appointment?
Yes.
That was your view throughout?
Yes.
You're made aware of that?
Yes, yes, and it's consistent with the process that was run previously to fill the Transport Secretary role a few years ago.
I'm interested in this one, for the purposes of today, and we can come back to others.
That's right, but I'm just saying it's consistent with what's happened with other open merit processes for secretary appointments.
And so, as a statement of fact, was it ever raised with you prior to your involvement in the recruitment process that Mr. Murray had donated to Minister Halen's personal political campaign?
No, it had not, and I, yes.
I hear the point of order.
I'm not sure that that's the evidence that's been introduced from previous hearings, that he donated to her personal political campaign.
It's been acknowledged publicly.
There were, to her personal, sorry, Chair, there were acknowledgements of small donations, but as I recall, they were not to Ms. Halen's personal political campaign, and I'd like that corrected if that's the case, or at least withdrawn until that's checked.
Chair, I don't think that's in contention. It's been in the public sector. The ministers had the chance to respond to that. It's very clear that donations were made.
He went to a Jo Halen fundraiser.
Order, order. It's clear that Mr. Murray went to a Jo Halen fundraiser, let's put it that way.
Order, there is no point of order, but that clarification, if it is a clarification, is now on the record.
All right, if I may, Chair, yeah, it was a donation made to the Summerhill election campaign, so that's very clear, donation to the minister's campaign for re-election in the seat of Summerhill. So, I'll put the question again. As a statement of fact, was it ever raised with you prior to your involvement in the recruitment process that Mr. Murray had donated to Minister Halen's Summerhill election campaign?
No, it was not, but what I would say, it would be that there is no requirement for candidates for government sector roles to declare any donation to a political party, and in fact, I think requiring or considering such information would be contrary to the merit principles and the apolitical nature of the government sector.
But this is about the minister and connections to people and entities who've given benefits or favours according to the ICAC definition. I'm not concerned about what Mr. Murray did, I'm concerned about the requirement to take into consideration, according to the ICAC definition, connections to people and entities who've given benefits or favours.
So, what I would say to that is I don't have remit over ministers, so I think it really is beyond my remit to comment on what's required of ministers, that, that would be for others. And I understand that would be regulated under the ministerial Code of Conduct and possibly the Electoral Funding Act.
Which is why my question was confined to you and your role as a statement of fact, whether it was raised with you prior to your involvement in the recruitment process?
No, it wasn't, and if it had, I would have to set aside that piece of information.
Yes, so it, it was not brought to your attention, you weren't aware of the donation?
No.
And no one told you about that?
No, I wouldn't expect to be told either because it's not relevant to a merit process.
All right. What would you have done if you were aware that a donation had been made?
Well, I would have to set aside that information under merit recruitment. What we are doing under merit recruitment is to compare or assess candidates against each other, so we're looking at relative merits against each other.
Yep.
And we're assessing their skills and experience against the capabilities set out in the role description.
Sure, understand the merit process.
Yep.
Asking about the donation, given that there is a flag or a very clear statement, much more than a flag, in the ICAC statement about managing conflicts, the existence of a conflict as a matter of fact, it's true that no one brought that to your attention. Is that, is that factually correct?
That's right. So, if I could answer further, so if that had been brought to my attention, and this is purely hypothetical at this point, I would have had to disregard it for the purposes of the recruitment process, and then I would seek some advice from those that have remit over this, as to whether there's anything additional that's needed.
You wouldn't just...
And just to that point, who would those people be that would have remit?
Point of order, Chair.
Yeah, I hear the point of order.
We have entered into deeply hypothetical, hypothetical territory with regards to what could potentially happen if something else had happened, if maybe another thing had happened, and I had a request that the questions move to away from the hypotheticals.
Chair, the witness has indicated that what she would have to do and has opened the door and begun answering. I think it's fair, it's a factual question in the remit of this inquiry in relation to existing documents and a framework that we have in place. The witnesses indicated what she would have done in those circumstances. I don't think it's deeply hypothetical, I think it's clearly saying, what would you do?
There is no point of order, but I will remind everyone that we are free-flowing, so if the government members would like to step in at some point, no, we are free-flowing. So, we'll go to Mr. Farlow and then perhaps Dr. Kane, if you wanted to ask a question, we could come back to you and then go back to Mrs. Ward after that. Go ahead, Mr. Farlow.
Sorry, just, Ms. Lowe, just for clarification, who would that person be who would have had remit that you would have sought clarification from?
Well, my, my first port of call when sort of technical issues like this come up would be, I would speak to the general, my own general counsel, and they would advise me of who else I might need to speak to.
Okay, so that's similar to the evidence that Peter Duncan has given in the past as well, that in that case, he would have sought legal advice if he hadn't been made aware of there being political donations?
Yes, I did read his, yes, I did read his evidence, and I think he gave evidence along the similar, along similar lines.
You just referred, sorry, no, no, can I just, you just referred in your answer to technical issue.
Order, sorry.
It's just on that sentence.
Free-flowing, it's a similar, just, it may help clarify things, but in the real world, in the interview panel that was conducted for Mr. Murray and determined based on the process, as per the rules and the act, that he was highly suitable, no one directed you to reach that conclusion.
Correct.
That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, that's what I said in my opening statement.
Okay, I just want to go back, touch base with reality before we go back into down rabbit holes.
That's your take on it. You referred in your answer to technical issue.
It's not my take on it, I'm asking the witness a question, the witness has responded.
Chair, can I ask?
Three of you are running cover, I just have a question about the sentence.
Order, I will allow Ms. Ward to just finish off on that one, one question she's about to ask, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Baragick.
It's just timely, and thank you, Chair, because the answer you gave, you referred to a technical issue that you would have to get that advice on, can I just follow through, what was that technical issue?
When I'm saying there's, there's potentially a legal issue or an issue that relates to legislation or some other sort of instrument, and those two instruments that I mentioned, ministerial Code of Conduct and Electoral Funding Act, you know, they're within the purview of others, so I would need to seek advice on that, I wouldn't have...
Happy to go back, I'm not trying, but just what was the potential legal issue that you may have had to seek advice on?
I think this is hypothetical now. Look, it didn't arise, so I...
But you've referred to that in your answer, I'm just wanting you to elaborate on what that might have been, you said there might have been a technical issue, it might have been a potential legal issue.
So, the issue would be whether any further action is required by me, that would be the issue.
Mr. Baragick.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned before, Ms. Lowe, about the GSA, GSA Act requiring consultation with the minister regarding appointments. Why do you think that would be put in there? What's the utility of that provision?
So, it's what I referred to before about the nature of the relationship between a secretary and a minister, and I outlined some of that context in the legislation, in Section 25 of the legislation. It is a very close working relationship, and it would not work effectively if a minister did not have a high degree of confidence and trust in the person filling the secretary role.
And it would be, it would be highly unremarkable, wouldn't it, that the minister would have a preference in, in the context of that sort of those KPIs, if you like, trust, political confidence? I mean, we're, we're living in a world here where you would imagine that that provision's in there because the minister should have some say over the senior person that's going to affect his or her ability to run a department, correct?
That's right, and that's why the requirement for consultation is in the rules.
So, you, you, this, this sort of, this sort of implied world where everything is arms-length in the sense that the minister has zero control and shouldn't have control just doesn't exist in practice, does it?
Well, I think what's telling is that secretaries, or recruitment for secretaries is treated very differently to recruitment for other senior executives and non-executives, and that's in recognition of the unique role that secretaries play under the GSE Act.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. So, you've said, thank you, Ms. Lowe, and I do appreciate you are trying to be helpful here for the extent to which you were involved, and so let's come back to that. So, whether you referred to whether there was a potential technical issue, whether there was a potential legal issue that you may have in those circum, if, in those circumstances, you may have sought legal advice on, and in relation to whether further action was required by you, can I just ask you to elaborate on that, what potential further action that might have been in those circumstances?
So, you're now asking me to guess what my general counsel may have advised me?
No, no, certainly not.
I'm just not in a position to do that.
No, no, I'm certainly not, I'm just asking in your experience, in your position, what further action potentially those avenues might have been, we're asking you to second guess.
Look, I'm not going to speculate, speculate on what advice I would have been given about any, any action that I might, may have needed to take, yeah.
All right. We may come back to that then. So, based on Mr. Duncan's evidence and your evidence then, are you aware of any assessment or declaration or risk management process that was put in place regarding the possibility of Minister Halen's potential conflict of interest regarding the political donation during the recruitment process that led to Mr. Murray's appointment?
So, the, the panel that I was on declared, you know, that we were each familiar with some of the candidates, but there was nothing other than sort of a professional, I suppose, crossing of paths. There was no process that I'm aware of in relation to the minister, but I would say that if there is a conflict, it would be for others to declare their own conflicts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In relation to the potential...
Can I just ask, I just wanted to ask to clarify there.
Yeah.
Have you ever had a situation where the fact that, as I understand it, Mr. Murray attended, was it tickets? Was that what the donation was? Have you ever had a situation where a secretary has been, you know, questioned over whether or not they're suitable for a role because they may have attended a political event before?
No, never, and if I could probably give you a little bit more context around secretary recruitment, so I can only speak to the last nearly four years when I've been in this role, so the vast majority of appointments to secretaries during that period have been direct appointments. There is only one other secretary appointment that I'm aware of that was preceded by an open merit process, and only one that was preceded by a closed merit process, so a closed merit process is where the role isn't publicly advertised and potential candidates are identified and then invited to apply. So, the vast majority are direct appointments.
Go ahead, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. I wondered if I could ask you if, about other appointments, and I don't know if the PSC has remit, but for example, a ministerial advisory council for ageing, appointments to that type of board, is that something that PSC would, would look at and look at people's connections and, and political donations, or is that some, some other body that would have remit?
Yeah, so the PSC is generally not involved in appointments to ministerial advisory committees. I get involved in assisting with managing recruitment to statutory officers when I'm asked to do so by ministers. So, that would be, I guess, the bulk of the recruitment that I'm involved in would be statutory officer recruitment.
If, if a party operative or, or elected official was appointed to a ministerial board, that would, that would be someone else's to look at, that would be ICAC or...
Yeah, so I, I don't vet people before they're appointed, I, I would not see the names that are recommended to cabinet, so I don't have involvement in that.
Chair, I think, if I can just finish off the, that I was on, if you finished, I think that's outside the remit, but ministerial appointments are direct ministerial appointments to advisory boards, are they not?
So, they could be Liberal Party operatives?
Are they not?
Yeah, so it's for the, the minister to make recommendations and to institute any process in the lead-up to those recommendations.
So, can I come back to my question, which was based on Mr. Duncan's evidence and your evidence? You're saying there was no assessment, declaration, or risk management put in place regarding the possibility of Ms. Halen's potential conflict of interest regarding the political donation, so there was no assessment that you're aware of, no...
So, the obligation would be, I think, on, you know, if you have the conflict, the obligation is on you to declare it.
And to your awareness, were you aware of any, anything put around that potentially?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay. Do you think that putting forward candidates when they have made a donation and haven't declared it is a concern?
Point of order, Chair.
Yeah, I hear the point of order.
That was clearly asking for opinion, do you think, yeah?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, to the point of order, just, just let me speak. I don't... To the point of order, just, just let me speak. Um, I don't, I'm not sure that's the point of order, but I, I was also a bit concerned that we keep talking about something as though it's fact. We keep talking, your questions keep asserting that there was a potential conflict of interest. I'm not sure that that's appropriate to just keep stating, um, without it having been proven in any way.
Well, to.
Go ahead.
I take your point, Chair, but to that point, I did establish the ICAC referral and specifically states in managing conflicts of interest that potential, which is why I phrased it as a potential conflict, and it arises specifically out of what the ICAC has said and the Public Service Commissioner has acknowledged.
assertion that this set of circumstances would be a potential conflict of interest.
Sure.
As though everything could be a potential conflict of interest. But by stating it that way, you're making out as though there is actually a potential conflict of interest.
Well.
I just would caution you to be careful about that because that's quite an assertion in the circumstances.
Certainly, Chair, I'll take that on board, but it arises out of the ICAC's published conflict of interest document.
That has nothing to do with these particular circumstances.
This is an inquiry into transparency and accountability, um, public expectations and integrity measures. I would have thought that the ICAC publication on potential conflicts is something that this committee should be guided by, but if you're telling me we should ignore.
And we are, and that's the point.
We should ignore the ICAC.
Um, Mrs Ward, sorry, Dr Kane, did you want to pop in?
I did have a question, thank you.
Well, you keep running cover on my questions.
Excuse, excuse.
I was halfway, I hadn't even started my question.
Order, do we want to go to blocks of time?
It was, it was a point of order that was made on Ms Ward's question. And therefore she should be able to continue with a question.
Okay, I do uphold that. I think though, Mrs Ward, we need to be a bit careful because you have had quite a lot of time already in this session. We could go to blocks of time if that's preferred.
We may, we may need to because.
Finish your question.
We may need to. Um, I, I think that my question's being interrupted halfway through the question. I'm happy to finish the question on that topic and move on, Chair. I think that's only fair to, to the witness if no one else. Um, all right, well, so why were there, um, two different rankings for the candidates, um, in this process?
Yeah, I think Mr Tudor Hope, um, asked me that question in budget estimates in October, um, last year. And as I, um, responded at the time, um, we didn't rank the candidates, we didn't use the word rank or ranking, we didn't place numbers next to the candidates. The, the executive search firm prepared the report after listening to the panel deliberate. Um, we were broadly satisfied with how that report was drafted and I think those descriptors reflect the different experiences that both candidates bring to the table.
Thank you, Chair.
So there was not a ranking?
That was the end of that question.
Dr Kane.
Well, no, Chair, I need to be able to finish my line of questioning. This is just, this is just interrupting for the sake of.
Well, it's not weird.
Point of order, Chair, um, I think we need to come to a decision about whether or not we're going to have lots of times. Because free, the concept of free flowing implies some sort of equal distribution of time. The member opposite probably has had about 70% of the time today, so we need to come to a decision.
Okay, do we want to go to?
With your interruptions.
We can, let's set a timer, please.
I'm happy to give them time, Chair, if it makes them happy.
Well, it's fair, it's all about being happy, it's just about.
But it's about getting the flow of questions.
Okay, order.
I mean, everyone asks.
I can't even finish my question, then a point of order is taken, then you take over.
Order, in line with our previous resolution, if it's not working, we'll go to time, so we're going to time, we're going to have 10 minutes each. Go ahead, Mrs Ward.
No, you go ahead. No, no, that's fine, thank you, Ms Ward.
You've got pressing questions, go ahead.
No, the decision's been made, go ahead.
So you said, um, in relation to the ranking, um, I mean, it's just.
I, I said there wasn't a ranking.
There was no ranking.
So when was the term very suitable, um, determined to be a term that could be attributed to Mr Murray? When in that process did that term come about?
So at the conclusion of the interviews, the panel deliberated, um, and then the executive search firm had the task of, I guess, bringing that deliberation together and reflecting it in a report. Um, so that is when, um, that terminology was used, but as I said in my opening statement, the GSE rules do not prescribe terminology to be used or whether a ranking is to be used.
So that was a terminology that came up, uh, was come up with by the, uh, executive recruitment firm?
As per her evidence.
Yes, and, and the panel was comfortable to unanimously sign off on the report.
Um, in the, well, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, Chair, that we have running commentary from members.
Yep, order.
I asked members to restrain themselves, Mr Primrose is very experienced in committee conduct, and I ask that you ask him to restrain his commentary.
Order, I agree, order, order.
Unanimously, I thought that was.
Okay, interjections are disorderly at all times.
If you want to attend as a witness, we can call you, we've called many people who can't show up.
Okay, order, we're not talking across the table at each other, order. Your time's running out, go ahead, please, Mrs Ward.
Thank you. Um, so during the final recruitment panel then, um, of you, Mr Duncan and Mr Betts, Ms Low, did Mr Duncan declare that he had previously served as Deputy Director General of the Premier's Department while Mr Murray was Morris Yemma's Chief of Staff?
Well, I knew where, um, Mr Duncan had worked previously, and as I said before, we spoke about conflicts. No one declared a conflict, although people talked about being familiar with some of the candidates. And I think simply working with somebody in a professional context doesn't mean you've got a conflict.
So can I just go back on that? No one, you said no one declared a, any conflict of interest at all?
What we declared was that we were familiar, each of us were familiar with at least some of the candidates.
All right, and did Mr Duncan, it's a yes or no, did Mr Duncan declare that he had served as Deputy Director General of the Premier's Department while Mr Murray was Mr Yemma's Chief of Staff?
Look, I, I can't recall, but we did, you know, he did talk about knowing, you know, or having crossed paths with him in a professional context.
And, and did he declare that specifically, that they had worked together in those capacities?
So I, I don't know how you're using the word declare, so the, the obligation is to declare any conflicts of interest. But what we did say was, none of us had, had any specific conflicts of interest, but we had crossed paths professionally with at least some of these people before.
Mm-hmm, but no clarification as to the circumstances in which we'd crossed paths?
Um, I think that there was discussion of how we knew different people.
All right, and did Mr Duncan elaborate about how he knew people and specifically how he knew Mr Murray?
I mean, we each talked about different contexts, you know, Mr Duncan talked about the previous roles he'd held. I, you know, spoke about, yes, I knew Howard Collins, you know, and, you know, that, that's the, the context in which it happened.
But specifically in relation to Mr Duncan, he didn't specifically declare that he had the circumstances in which he knew Mr Murray?
He, he said he knew him, had crossed paths with him.
Mm-hmm.
And it, we knew, the rest of the panel knew that, that he had worked at RMS and Department of Commerce before.
Hmm. Um, all right, so then Mr Duncan, um, somehow, uh, declared some form of crossing paths, but without any specificity?
So all of us declared that we had no conflicts of interest, but that we were familiar with some of the candidates in a professional context. And being familiar with candidates in a professional contact, context does not necessarily mean you've got a conflict.
All right, if you do have a conflict, um, would you have declared it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, all right, um.
So Ms Low, um, so Mr Murray originally was deemed to be, um, an unsuitable, and this is from the same executive search firm, deemed to be unsuitable and a high-risk candidate. And then the terminology of very suitable was created, while you had other candidates who were, um, named as highly suitable. How did, how did that process emerge where that ranking of Mr Murray was changed to be very suitable, um, when previously had been seen to be unsuitable and a risk?
Look, I think others have given evidence on this point. During an executive search, it is an iterative process. Um, an executive search firm, um, will be speaking to sources and potential candidates. Um, applications will be received. The search firm might form views based on what's on the papers and what might be available publicly, such as on LinkedIn. Um, but as they meet candidates, views may change. So somebody may have looked a certain way on paper, but when they were interviewed through a screening interview done by the executive search firm, the view might change. Then when it goes through to an assessment process and the evaluation panel, I would say each of those panels needs to make up their own mind about the candidates and, um, the reports of the executive search firm are just one input into that. Um, and the panels really need to interrogate, um, information around the candidates and apply the assessments.
Ms Low, to that point, in your opening statement, you discussed how the, due to the unique, and I noted, due to the unique responsibilities of the secretary, it's required that the minister has a high degree of confidence and trust in whoever holds that role. Um, was that a key determinant for yourself and the panel in making the assessments with respect to Mr Murray and other candidates?
So we assessed, um, against the capabilities in the role description. Um, I'm not sure if you have the role description, but the role description has a section on key relationships. And one of the key relationships called out is the relationship with the ministers in the, in the portfolio, given that there, there is more than one.
And did you prioritize any of those ministers, for instance? I think all the evidence we've heard is that it was Minister Halen that the secretary, um, that was the determinant on the secretary. Minister Graham has said that previously in the House. I don't think Minister Hatcherson had anything to do with the appointment either. Um, was there any discussion about the prioritization with the key ministers?
So just to reiterate, what the, um, evaluation panel was doing was assessing the candidates we interviewed against each other and against the capabilities in the role. And then it was a matter for the employer, in this case, the Secretary of the Premier's Department, to take into account various factors before making a decision, and one of those factors would have been consultation with the minister.
And, and was that only consideration from the meeting that the minister had with the two potential candidates? Or was there information that was put into the process prior to that point?
I, I really think that that's a question you'd need to ask, um, Mr Duncan, and I think he addressed it in his evidence. He, he did respond to questions about what he took into account in making his decision. But in our deliberations, we were looking at the capabilities and the relative merits of each of the candidates.
We are, however, asking you, and appreciate others have given evidence, but today we are interested in your view, so, um, thank you for that referral, but can I just come back to, um, when in the process, specifically this one, you've talked about other processes and what you might do and how it's iterative, but I'm interested in this process, how it changed. When in the process was it decided to create the new ranking of very suitable for Mr Murray?
So, once again, there was no ranking, and as I said before, after we conducted the interviews, the panel spent time deliberating on what we'd heard, looking at scenario presentations and the like. And, you know, we had a pretty in-depth discussion there, and then the executive search firm went away and prepared a report based on what they had heard, came back with the report. Those were the descriptors that were used and the panel was happy enough generally to sign off on it.
Yes, but my question was, when, whether it's a ranking or a category or a description, the, um, very suitable title was given, when in the process was that decided?
I just said that it was decided when the report was drafted and when we were presented with the report.
To the new category.
That the panel members were comfortable. Um, I don't know if I would call it a new category, there are no prescribed categories. We could have used any number of terminology.
Whatever we want to call them, okay, I'll move on. Um, and so in the public service, is it appropriate for decision makers to be communicating with candidates about the recruitment process that they're involved in?
Yes, so the, when, when there's a job advertisement, there's usually a contact officer. In this case, it was the executive search firm, um, but if.
Yeah, sorry, but for the panel members to be communicating, the recruitment panel to be, um, communicating with those candidate, candidates about that recruitment process?
With the individual candidates. Well, it would depend on whether anyone on the panel was the contact officer.
Like texting them, calling them, texting them through the process or calling them through the process, is that appropriate?
I would, well, it would depend on the nature of the texts and it would depend on whether a member of a panel was nominated as the contact officer to answer questions in relation to the job.
If they were not, as, as you went, if they were just part of the process.
Oh, sorry.
Well, so I was just following on on the example, I just, I just want to finish that off, if I may, just.
Just one final question?
Yep.
Yep.
So, sorry, can you?
If they were not the contact officer, if they're on the recruitment panel, is it appropriate, in your view, as the Public Service Commissioner, for them to be texting or communicating with candidates about the recruitment process?
Well, if I was a panel member and a potential candidate contacted me, I would say go and speak to the contact officer.
And you wouldn't have any further communications about the recruitment process? Is that yes?
Yes.
Um, thank you. Um, I think we, when we, um, had our last hearing in relation to this issue, it became very clear that, you know, part of the problem here is this sort of muddying between whether it is a direct appointment or a merit-based selection process. Um, but when we come back to the, uh, secretary's role under the GSE Act and the fact that the minister can directly appoint a secretary, how important is it that the minister is happy with the choice, I guess, made by the selection panel?
Yes, so I'll go back a step, so, um, the minister is not the employer, so it is not their choice if it's a direct appointment. The employer would either be the premier or the secretary of the Premier's Department acting under delegation. The minister's, um, opinion, I think, matters. I, I think the degree of weight put on that would depend. Um, for direct appointments, there's always consultation with the minister. And for merit-based, whether it's a open merit or a closed merit process, the minister's views are also required to be sought. But ultimately, the decision maker will make up their mind about how much weight they put on that because the act is silent on weighting or a formula.
So have you ever had a situation then where, um, you've seen, you know, a secretary appointed where the minister wasn't happy with that appointment?
Uh, yes, I remember a, a closed merit process, um, where a minister had suggested a couple of names, um, those people were interviewed together with other people that had been identified. Um, and the panel did not recommend the people that had been put into the process by the minister, but I don't want to speak specifically about that instance.
But that was a secretary appointment or?
Yes.
Right, okay, that's really interesting. Okay, thank you. Um, can I ask, coming back to, I guess, to the other parts of the, um, of the terms of reference? If, if a minister was to, um, establish a, a particular new office, um, so they just sort of direct the establishment of an entire sort of new office, would that be seen as, as being involved in the recruitment of people in that office? Or would they have to be directly involved, um, in the individual recruitment decisions for that to be problematic?
Look, that, to me, that's quite hypothetical. I mean, it's, I would need to know more facts of the case. I mean, it's not unusual for departments to set up transition offices, particularly when there's a change in government. Um, I, I don't know the full detail of what happened, um, with the transport transition office. I only had a one, one, I guess, element in that, which was providing advice. Um, but what a, a minister couldn't do is say, I want this person to head up the transition office.
Yep.
Or I want somebody from my office to sit on the panel. I think both of those things would not be appropriate or consistent with secretaries, you know, running their own show, so to speak.
Yep, thank you, that's very useful. Um, just back on that other example that you had a moment ago about the, um, situation where a secretary might get appointed, um, that is not sort of, I guess, the chosen or the favorite, um, of a particular minister. Um, in that situation, was the secretary responsible to a number of ministers?
Yes, I think so.
Right, um, but there was, were the other, I guess, were the other ministers who were consulted happy with the situation?
I don't recall whether other ministers were consulted, um, I think the dealings were primarily with the senior minister. So this was several years ago now, so.
Okay, interesting. Um, thank you. Um, that's all that I have, so I'm going to hand over now to the government for their 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms Low. Um, and I just wanted to, because we've spoken a bit about hypotheticals, so I just wanted to, once again, have you confirm the facts, um, about the appointment of the secretary. The minister was approp-, according to your evidence so far, the minister was appropriately consulted as per the obligations under the act. Everyone on the panel agreed that Mr Murray was very suitable, noting that there's no ranking and noting that there is no set category, so whether the terminology was very suitable or anything else, that was the, and no direction was applied to the panel on the decision in the matter. Is that correct?
Yes, I think you've asked me three, um, questions there. The first was around. The first was around ministerial consultation. And I would confirm that the rules require consultation with the minister and it does not preclude more than one conversation with the minister. Your second question, could you please remind me?
Yes, that everyone on the panel agreed that Mr Murray was, and terminology's beaten up for discussion, but very suitable?
Yes, we all signed the report with that description.
And no direction was applied to the panel about the decision that you ultimately.
None whatsoever.
All right. And also, just to confirm for me, the final decision maker on the appointment is indeed the secretary?
Secretary of the Premier's Department.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I wondered, Ms Lowe, if you could tell us a bit about how many times or your experience in participating in senior appointments, such as the one we've been talking about?
How many times?
How many times, what's the breadth of your experience?
I guess, many, I couldn't put a number on it, but over my years as a senior executive in the sector, which would be more than 15 years, many times. But as I said before, there have been very few secretaries appointed following an open merit or closed merit process.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. The role of the secretary is a big one, it's large and complex. And you've spoken about the, looking at the criteria and looking at the different candidates against the criteria. It's fair to say, wouldn't it be, that different candidates would be better at some than others, some would pose more of a risk on one thing and others on another.
That's right, and I think that's why it's important for the panel to have the discussion about the relative merits of candidates because different people have different strengths and different areas for development.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, can I just, just on this, I mean, just to get straight to the point, there's clearly an implication from the opposition that.
Point of order.
I hear the point of order.
I haven't even finished, I'm two words out.
You haven't heard what the implication is.
I ask you to withdraw that there's clearly an implication from the opposition. I don't think it's for you, can I finish my point of order? I don't think it's for you to summarise. The opposition is entitled to ask within the terms of reference of this committee and ask you, rephrase your question. You can ask a question to this witness without the commentary about me doing my job and the opposition doing that.
All right, order, you could just rephrase the beginning of that, perhaps.
Ms Lowe, if there was to be an implication or an assertion or a perception that there was political influence applied during the process, would it not be a fair assessment, given the evidence we've heard, that if the candidate was marked very suitable, and I note that other candidates were marked highly suitable, then the ministerial discretion via the consultation that you outlined previously to my question, it would be more than fair to accept that the minister has a right to express an opinion about the most appropriate person, given the trust, confidence factors that you outlined before, bolted on to the very suitable assessment and gets the job? I mean, it's highly uncontroversial, wouldn't it, that that outcome was achieved?
I'm not quite sure if I understood the question correctly, but what I will do is go back to the legislation and the rules require consultation with the minister. Mr Duncan did that. The minister met with two candidates and then expressed a view as part of that. And Mr Duncan gave evidence about how that imported into his decision-making.
Well, can I just, I'll just rephrase, I'll just rephrase it in another context. If a candidate was marked unsuitable and a minister insisted that that person got taken on, that would be of concern, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, the minister can express their view in a consultation. Then it's up to a decision-maker the amount of weight to place on that view. And if the minister's view was that an unsuitable candidate was the right candidate for them, the Secretary of the Premier's Department would just have to weigh that up, however they saw fit.
But surely, if in a situation like this where the candidate has been marked very suitable, the minister's consulted and the candidate's taken on, if you had an issue with that, you would have raised concern, wouldn't you, with the minister? Like, if there was an issue with the appointment?
Are you talking about me personally?
Oh, no, the, the, the.
Panel.
The panel.
So let me just talk about the process. The panel's work is done once it completes its report.
Yeah.
And then the next step is for the Secretary of the Premier's Department to make a decision, taking into account consultation with the minister.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Could I ask a question? It was a hypothetical that was posed to you about if you'd been presented with information about someone making a political donation. And I think you said you would have set that information aside during the process?
So for the purposes of comparing the relative merits of candidates and comparing candidates to the capabilities for the role. So that information you just mentioned would not be relevant for a merit assessment.
Okay, so it's not relevant to whether someone is going to perform the job well?
Yes, a merit assessment is based on comparing somebody's skills and experience against the capabilities required for the role.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we're discussing the appointment of someone who was determined from a group of senior public servants, yourself and others. We're discussing now the appointment of someone who was considered to be, by a very experienced group, a very suitable candidate for this role. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Mr Primrose?
If I can just ask, just for an abundance of clarity, can I ask that if we look at the provisions of the Government Sector Employment Act, the rules and the practice, would I be fair to say that they all recognise the importance of the minister's perspective on the appointment of the most senior public servant they will be working with?
Yes, I would say the GSE Act does recognise that and hence the different recruitment rules applying to secretaries.
I've got another one about the GSE Act. It's quite new, isn't it? It came into effect at the start of 2023, is that correct?
So the GSE Act was enacted in 2013?
2013, okay.
But there were particular amendments that came into effect then, that might be what you're referring to.
That is, thank you, I appreciate you helping me out there. Given that there were amendments, it would be appropriate, particularly with the change in government, people taking up new roles, for yourself and other agencies that have an oversight role to be consulted on processes, appointments, those kinds of things.
So if you're referring to some of the amendments that came in in 2013, I have seen the evidence of the Chief People Officer of Transport for New South Wales in budget estimates as to why she sought my advice. I mean, that would seem appropriate to me. I think it's better to seek advice than to proceed down a path if you're not completely sure.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Chair, I have a question.
I'll just ask one more question and then I will hand over to you for the last two minutes, Mrs Ward. Ms Lowe, you played a key role in the appointment of Mr Murray. You have heard the testimony of other witnesses in this hearing. And you've also heard, I'm sure, these issues being well-ventilated through budget estimates and in other places. After hearing all of that, do you have any concerns about the manner in which Josh Murray was appointed to secretary?
No, I don't, based on listening to the evidence of, I think, two of the four assessment panel members, listening to the evidence of Mr Duncan, Secretary of the Premier's Department, and based on what I have visibility of from my involvement. There were no alarm bells ringing and could I say that I was on the panel when that appointment was made to the Senior Trade and Investment Commissioner to the Americas?
Well, that's outside the remit of this.
And I had no problems calling out issues with that process. So if I thought there were issues with the process in this instance, I wouldn't have a problem saying so, even though I was involved in it myself.
Thank you, that's very relevant. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just in relation to the transition office, Ms Lowe, were you aware of any requests or information or commentary of names being provided for the transition office or requests for certain people to sit on the recruitment panel for the transition office?
So when the Chief People Officer rang me, she didn't mention any names. She put a couple of questions to me about the practical application of Section 26.4 of the GSE Act. She didn't say that there'd been a direction, it was more along the lines of a question was asked or a request was made.
I'm not asking about a direction, that's not what I asked you. What I'm asking is if any.
Well, no names were mentioned to me.
No names were mentioned by the Chief People Officer to you. So what about requests for certain people to sit on the recruitment panel?
So I was asked whether it would be okay or consistent with the legislation for somebody from the minister's office to sit on the recruitment panel. And my answer was it would not be consistent.
And why is that?
It's not consistent with having an apolitical public service.
Can you elaborate on that? How is it not consistent?
So the secretary is the employer of staff within their agency, including senior executives. And in this instance, the question was in relation to a proposed executive director role to head up the transition office.
And a suggestion of someone to sit on the panel for that recruitment?
Yeah, I think it was a request or a question asked, that's how it was put to me.
Suggested name?
No, no name was suggested. I was asked a question whether it would be consistent.
Can the minister put someone on the recruitment panel?
Order, yeah, okay, order. That does bring us to the end of our session. Thank you so much for your time today and for your very succinct opening statement that you've provided to us for hand side as well. We will take a 15-minute break, we'll be back at 10.30 with our next witnesses. Thank you. We will take a 15-minute break. We'll be back at 10.30 with our next witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Low.
Excellent. We are back with our next panel of witnesses. Welcome. If I could ask you to please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Tracy Taylor, Chief People Officer, Transport for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Susan Carroll, Executive Director, Transport for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Excellent. Thank you. Did you have an opening statement that you wanted to give?
No, thank you.
No? Excellent. Okay, well, we're going to divide the time starting with the opposition.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Carroll for coming along today and assisting the committee in your ongoing commitment and the work that you do. Can I just clarify that you familiarise yourselves both with the terms of reference for this committee inquiry?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, I might start with you. Given we have you together, I might go between you at times. But if you feel you have something to add, please feel free to jump in to clarify or assist the committee. Ms. Taylor, I saw in documents, you'd be aware, there's a number of documents that have been provided to the Parliament in this inquiry. So I saw in those documents concerning Mr. Asher's conduct. And it's a fact that the Secretary of Transport referred Mr. Asher's conduct to you and to David Britton for investigation. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. This is not a trick question. They're all very straightforward and factual. But is that the typical process when it concerns legal issues around employment?
It would depend on the matter in front of the secretary. It'd also depend on which channel it came into. But it wouldn't be abnormal for myself or the chief legal officer to be engaged to provide advice on an employment matter.
Okay. And so when the former secretary requested legal advice on the request to appoint people to the Transition Office by the Minister's Office, did that request come to you as well?
No, it didn't.
Okay, where did that go?
I'll need to refer you to Ms. Carroll, who was involved in the process.
The secretary raised that issue with me. And I requested legal advice from our General Counsel at the time at his request.
And that's Mr. Britton?
No, it was our previous General Counsel.
Who was that?
Ms. Sally Webb.
Thank you. So in documents provided to the Parliament under the Standing Order 52, it's my understanding that the legal advice and any correspondence concerning that advice has not been provided to the Parliament. Are you aware if it has been?
The legal advice that Ms. Webb prepared has been disclosed under the Standing Order 52.
All right. Perhaps you could provide the document index number where that has been provided?
We can certainly look at that. But because it was legal advice, a claim for privilege has been made over that document.
That's right. But certainly, excuse me, in relation to that, there would have been a number of surrounding emails going with that, the request for that advice and provision of that advice.
No, the events happened quite quickly. The secretary came back from a meeting with the Minister's Office, raised the issue. The advice was sought that day. The advice was provided and communicated back to the secretary.
So there were no emails or correspondence formally requesting that advice? It was just verbal?
It was verbal. We were working quite quickly. The call was made by me to the General Counsel. She was very responsive, prepared that written legal advice. And then she subsequently joined me to provide the secretary with a briefing on that legal advice.
Okay, so there was no other emails or correspondence about, can we get together? Or the advice will be ready in this amount of time? Or have it ready for you now? Or...
There was no need for it. The advice was provided fairly swiftly, I think, within that day, I think. So...
All right. How many times, Ms. Taylor or Ms. Carroll, has legal advice been sought on recruitment processes in your experience?
I wouldn't be able to say a specific number. It would depend on the matter that we were referring... So, sorry, could you just clarify your asking about recruitment?
In your experience, it's factual. How many times has legal advice been sought on recruitment processes?
On occasion, we would seek legal advice from either our Executive Director of Employment and Safety or our Chief Legal Officer, depending on the seniority of the role that we're recruiting for. So it does happen. It wouldn't happen as an everyday occurrence. But on occasion, we would reach out for that employment advice.
All right. And there was something to motivate or to spur the request for this legal advice? Obviously, there was some alarm bell going off of some sort or some alert to say we need advice on this, and that prompted this request.
I wouldn't clarify... Sorry, I wouldn't particularise it as necessarily an alarm bell. It could be that the person involved in the recruitment process wanted to check the application of the GSE rules, all of the Transport Administration Act, to ensure that the decision-making was sound.
All right. So what are the typical concerns that would prompt the request for legal advice?
It could be the different mechanism that we are going to use to deploy the recruitment. So whether we were looking at mobilising someone at level ongoing through the GSE Act or the Transport or the corresponding section in the Transport Administration Act and relying on their contract to mobilise directly assigned. It could be that the secretary wanted to exercise his employment powers and directly appoint. Or he wanted to use other mechanisms to actually make the appointment. So we might seek legal advice to particularise how we would go about those mechanisms.
Okay. And in this case, it was to go essentially to not the third one, I think you mentioned, where there's not a process. It's a typical process.
For the Transition Office? I didn't ask for the legal advice. I would have to refer you to Ms. Carroll on what was asked for in relation to that particular legal advice.
Ms. Carroll?
So, as I've previously given evidence on this issue, the secretary had a meeting with the Minister's Office, understood that there was a request to stand up a Transition Office, understood that there would be a request made from the Minister's Office around the appointment, and basically put that to us. We'd not been familiar with the concept of a Transition Office. And on that basis, the secretary requested legal advice. He was very alive to the change in the GSE legislation.
Okay, thank you. So you mentioned a request was made from the Minister's Office about that appointment. Can you just elaborate on what that means?
So, as I've given evidence previously, there were two meetings with the Minister's Office. The first one I did not attend. Only the secretary attended that. The second one I did attend with him. He provided a debrief following that first meeting regarding the interaction he'd had with them regarding the establishment of the Transition Office. And at the second meeting that I was at, the Minister's Chief, then Chief of Staff, specifically made that request in relation to the creation of the ED role and the provision of a name for the ED role.
All right. So Mr. Gartrill was the Chief of Staff at the time. It's not an issue. He was making that request on behalf of the Minister's Office or having some communication as her Chief of Staff in relation to that. And that prompted the need or the question mark for legal advice, given that it had come from the Minister's Office?
Correct.
Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. And what did, at that debriefing you mentioned with the former secretary, Mr. Sharp, what did he say at that debriefing after the first meeting?
He basically shared that there had been communication regarding the intent to establish a Transition Office. There had been some suggestion regarding the nature of the appointment, and that was it.
What do you mean by the nature of the appointment?
It was the former secretary's understanding that there may have been a request made for an appointment that may have been from a ministerial office.
So it was a suggestion made?
That's my understanding. I wasn't at that meeting. I can't comment beyond that.
Certainly. But your understanding from the debrief provided to you that a suggestion was made by the Minister's Office in relation to the Transition Office that prompted the communication with you and the subsequent request for legal advice to clarify
That's correct.
that request from the Minister's Office. All right. That suggestion was for a specific person?
Not to my knowledge. That was not communicated to me by the secretary.
What was communicated to you?
Simply what I've just provided.
That...
That appointment may be of somebody from a ministerial office. That was his understanding. I should clarify that. That was his understanding that was communicated.
Yep.
And in saying ministerial office, Minister Halen's office or any other minister?
No, no.
Just nondescript?
Nondescript.
Such to prompt the request, though. Were there ever concerns of Labour-linked identities being linked to this job?
Point of order, Chair. I think that the term Labour-linked identities is asking for an opinion on a very amorphous term. What's a Labour-linked identity?
If the witnesses are unclear about that term, they could ask the questioner for some clarification, but I will allow the question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
In your interpretation, were there concerns about the suggestion of a Labour-linked identity for this job?
Look, I didn't really have a view on that.
In your interpretation, was there an issue raised about a Labour-linked identity being suggested for the job?
No information was provided regarding an identity for the appointment. The information that was shared with me by the former secretary is just as I've said. The secretary was alive to considerations and advice was requested.
There were concerns, though. We can put it at that... At least at that level, there were some concerns raised.
I think the secretary wanted to ensure that he was well-informed in providing a response to that request.
All right. Ms. Taylor, you've previously said regarding asking the Public Service Commissioner about putting two candidates to the Minister for her selection for the Transition Office, as, and I'll quote, you said, "testing the boundaries". Is it common practice for recruitment in Transport for New South Wales to test the boundaries of legislation?
The GSE amendments had been made earlier that year. Just, I think it was January 2023 when the amendments were made. And I did not have intimate knowledge on how those amendments came to be. I was aware that it was a direct result of a previous inquiry. And I knew Ms. Low had been involved. I thought it was, given her involvement in that situation, I thought it was prudent to seek her input into the interpretation of the boundaries of that legislation so that I could appropriately advise the secretary.
You thought it was appropriate to ask the Minister?
No, I thought it was appropriate to speak to Ms. Low.
Ms. Low? Yes, okay. So, but in relation specifically to the Transition Office, you have said in your words, not trying to trick you, that it was testing the boundaries. On how many other occasions have you sought advice to test the boundaries of the legislation before recruitment?
Well, as I've said, on occasion, I have swapped my own legal advice from our Chief Legal Officer or our Executive Director of Employment and Safety. In this instance, as I said, the GSE amendments were relatively new. They talked about not directing the secretary in his employer powers. What I wanted to test was what does that mean in interpreting, can someone be involved in it as long as he's making the decision? They were the kinds of questions I put to Ms. Low to ensure that I could provide the fullest advice to the secretary.
Prompted by the Minister wanting to have some involvement in the Transition Office establishment?
I wouldn't particularise it as that. I was advised through Ms. Carroll that the Minister had, through, I think, the Chief of Staff, had said that they would like us to establish a Transition Office. And I was asked for advice on the placement approaches. And in doing that, that's what prompted me to have the conversation with Ms. Low.
All right. Someone surely, though, had the idea to include the ministerial office. And it wasn't the department's idea to include... um, and it wasn't the department's idea to include the ministerial office that came from Minister Haaland's office, that's correct, isn't it?
What's correct, Ms. Ward, is that the Minister's Office had indicated to the secretary, as I was advised by Ms. Carol, that they would like us to establish a transition office. And I was advised by Ms. Carol that a suggestion of an individual within the department, um, could be considered for this role. And in seeking my, uh, in seeking to provide advice to the secretary on the placement approach, I wanted to understand the GSE amendments and how far that would extend to, as I said, testing the boundaries of that legislation.
All right, and the Minister, um, the request or indication that they wanted to put someone on the recruitment panel for that transition office, um, that was testing the boundaries, wasn't it?
There was no, uh, suggestion to me by the Minister's Office that they wanted to be involved. It was simply me asking questions of Ms. Low on the interpretation of that legislation.
All right, but just to be clear, so, um, perhaps I might ask you, Ms. Carol, the suggestion didn't come from the department to include the Minister's Office on the recruitment panel, that came from the Minister's Office, that's correct, isn't it?
That wasn't raised with me, I wasn't aware of that inquiry being made. It was certainly nothing that had been raised directly with me, or indeed, to my knowledge, with the secretary at the time.
Ooh, but where did it come from, then? It wasn't suggested by the department that the Minister should have someone on the recruitment panel? Where would that suggestion have come from?
So it was my, as I said, Ms. Ward, it was me testing the boundaries with Ms. Low on the interpretation of what does directing the secretary in his powers mean? So I was
Can I go back a step, I understand that, I shouldn't accept that, but can I go back a step? Where did it come from?
It came from me, so.
No, but to prompt you to ask for that advice, where did the suggestion come from to you?
There was, there was no, there was no suggestion outside of, Ms. Carol had advised me that the, uh, Minister's Office had indicated to the secretary that they wanted to establish a transition office. I was also made aware that there was an internal employee, um, suggested to, who could be considered for the role. I took that information and simply had a conversation with Ms. Low on how does the establishment of a transition office, the suggestion of a candidate, mean in, in relation to the legislation? As well as, would that mean that a Minister's Office could be involved or couldn't be involved? There was no direct suggestion made to me, that was my definite, I was def- trying to define the legislation and its meaning to directing the secretary in its powers.
Okay, and it wasn't your idea to include ministerial staff on the recruitment panel, was it?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, um, so, um, so, can I just ask whose idea it was then to test the two names, um, put forward? One of which, well, whose idea was it to test the, the two names?
So I didn't put two names to Ms. Low to test, I didn't say I was testing two names with Ms. Low. I, my, the scenario that I played out with Ms. Low was in the practical application of the GSE amendment, where the Minister's Office was not able to direct the secretary. Would that mean that if we were to select, say, two preferred candidates to put to the Minister as our preference? Would that be testing the boundaries, or that would be considered interpreting the direction of the secretary in his powers?
Who specifically asked you, um, whose idea was it to test the two names?
I didn't test two names, Ms. Ward, I was using it as a scenario to say, as you go through a recruitment process, you can start with an open pool of candidates, and you can whittle it down to, to prefer, preferential candidates. It is not abnormal that through a recruitment process, we would go through and become out with two potential preferred candidates, and we may then add an additional step, another, another interview with other stakeholders, who may then be involved to give their view on those two candidates. That was the scenario I was sort of stepping through with Ms. Low. So it wasn't a real scenario, it was an example scenario.
A hypothetical.
It was a hypothetical that I was using.
All right, so that for a senior public service role, a new office, the appointment of a new office, that we would test those names, and we would involve the Minister's Office in that public service appointment?
Again, Ms. Ward, I wasn't suggesting that the Minister's Office asked me to do this. There was no two names that I put to Ms. Low, it was simply an example or a scenario that I was walking through to test the boundaries of that legislation.
So names were suggested by the Minister's Office potentially for consideration for that, um, new public service appointment?
As, um, Ms. Carol has previously given, uh, testimony, as, as I have, I was made aware that there was one internal name put to the secretary, um, as a potential candidate to be considered for the role.
Okay, and, um, that was part of what prompted you to seek the further advice?
I sought the advice to make sure that I could provide the secretary with the right approach to placing this position, and working within the boundaries of the GSE legislation.
All right, thank you. In your experience as a public servant then, on how many occasions, um, have two names been put to a minister for a senior executive appointment at Transport for New South Wales?
In, I, I'm not usually involved in recruitment where the Minister's Office is involved, so I couldn't say that that was, I've had any experience of that.
So you've never experienced that previously?
No.
Okay.
But again, I just want to reiterate, that was a practical scenario. It was not the reality, and it wasn't suggested to me that there would be two candidates put to the Minister's Office.
Ms. Carol, in your experience as a public servant, on how many occasions have two names been put to a minister? Have you ever seen that, where two names have been put to a minister for a senior executive appointment at Transport for New South Wales?
I haven't been involved in a scenario like that.
So you've never, in your experience, seen that?
No.
Okay, all right. Um, I noticed that a, a DLO started in the Minister's Office at the beginning of her appointment. Um, uh, was that person selected via a process or chosen by the Minister?
Sorry, Ms. Ms. Ward, can I just clarify? DLOs are an exception to what I've just said, um, where we go through an EOI process and we will ordinarily put, uh, a few candidates.
I'm not trying to blur them, I understand that, yeah, that's fine.
Sorry, and I should also clarify?
So can I just go back to that, I've got, sorry, very limited time, so just, Ms. Carol, and that DLO started, were they selected via a process or suggested by the Minister?
Sorry, the DLO?
Yep.
Which DLO are you referring to?
Uh, I can name them if you like.
I think it's better that you, yes.
Yep, Melanie Stewart.
And again, the question?
Yep, um, Melanie Stewart started with the Minister's Office at the beginning of her appointment.
Yes.
And was she selected via a process or handpicked, or chosen, or nominated by the Minister?
She was nominated by the Minister's Office, is my understanding.
I'll come back to that.
Um, thank you, I doubt I'll take all my time, so we probably end up with some, some stub time to be divided up. Um, can I just ask, so, um, Ms. Taylor, the, you, sorry, you've been in this role since, uh, end of twenty-one, is that?
Correct.
Correct? Um, and those changes that came in in relation to the direct control, um, from the Minister to the secretary, that issue, that came in at the end of twenty-two, was it? When did that take effect?
I believe it was, um, end of twenty twenty-two or beginning of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Um, so you had a period of time where you're working under the old act, and then you had this sort of new, um, situation with the new act. Um, had you had cause before, um, between when you were seeking out the advice at this time, in this context, um, and from when the legislation first came in to, to test that definition? Were there any other recruitment processes where that would have been relevant?
Through the, through the period of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three?
Sorry, from when the, um, amendment came in?
All right.
So you were working under the new situ, the new, um, uh, provision. Were there any other recruitment processes that would, that were taken, undertaken, um, under that new legislation? Where you could have gone and got that sort of definition, um, advice?
Um, well, there was the placement of the Coordinator General. Um, and I did seek advice from our own Chief Legal Officer at the time for that. I didn't feel it necessary to go to Ms. Low, as she'd already given me a fairly succinct definition of the interpretation of that legislation in relation to the Minister's Office's involvement.
Yep.
So I was comfortable with that. What I sought from the Chief Legal Officer was more around the, um, in the Coordinator General, was the different mechanisms, given he was acting in the secretary role at the time. Um, and the resulting, uh, recommendation that was coming out of the Bus Task, Task Force for his, uh, report, and the Minister's ability to, uh, direct us in relation to the establishment, sorry, responding to one of the, uh, recommendations within that report.
Um, so, one of the main sort of issues that's being teased out, um, in relation to the transition office then is, um, how much of, of suggesting, I guess, where the boundary is between suggesting and directing? Um, what did that legal advice, both, both sets, I guess, tell you, um, that can help us to understand where that line should be?
Certainly. So in the Coordinator General's, um, situation, and I believe Kate Boyd has given testimony of this before, is that the Minister's well within her right to be able to direct the agency in its structure and in, and its operation. Um, and with the Coordinator General, uh, for example, the advice I was, I provided was that we could effectively establish that role and change reporting lines at the, at the Minister's discretion. Um, however, if a new role was to be established, um, specific to that Coordinator General, then that decision on who would be placed in that role would absolutely need to be the, um, decision of the secretary. I provided that advice at the time around the Coordinator General, and that was very clear to me coming through the transition office as well. So the, whilst the Minister absolutely can direct us in the operation, so we can either establish the transition office role, or we can establish the Coordinator General role. If we had to place someone in those roles, then that, that is an employment decision, and that therefore it is the, the decision of the secretary. And that should not be interfered with.
And so how much of a suggestion in relation to a candidate is taken to be direction, I guess? Where is that line?
Again, my, I believe that Kate's, Kate Boyd's also provided testimony on this, is that there's nothing wrong with the Minister providing suggestions of candidates, as long as the decision is taken by the secretary of, on, and, sorry, on who goes into that position. And that can either be, as I said, he has multiple powers under the Transport Administration Act, so he can, you know, directly assign someone, he can directly appoint someone, or he can do open recruitment processes. In the transition office, the secretary, sorry, the former secretary made a decision after speaking to the, um, the candidate that was suggested, decided that he would temporarily assign that person into the role, but wanted to do an open recruitment process, and that is what we then undertook.
Okay, that's really useful. So there's nothing stopping the Minister from saying, um, you know, I want to set up this transition office. Oh, by the way, um, there's somebody who I think might be good for one of the roles, as long as they're not then making that decision. Um, so to what extent, I guess, do you take into account, uh, the power, uh, you know, imbalance, I guess, between a minister and a secretary? Maybe there's not as much as there would be between, um, the minister and other, um, uh, public officials, but is there consideration given to, you know, I guess, making the minister unhappy? Or is there any kind of, um, when we're considering whether a suggestion is more of a direction? Do we consider that sort of power dynamic as well? Is that part of?
I think you would need to put that question to the secretary, Ms. Boyd. What I would say, and to give, um, probably assurance, the, the, the former secretary via Ms. Carol did actually ask for me to provide advice on other people. So they, for the Executive Director Transition Office, was there other candidates across the organisation that he could consider, as well as this individual? So in, in my view, he was seeking his own assurances that this person did stack up against other people, and we did actually put at least one person forward for consideration.
Thank you, and to clarify for the record, I'm not for a moment suggesting that the, um, the, the current or former, um, secretary are in any way, um, you know, led in their, in their duties by the, um, by the Minister. But, um, I was just curious as to how that got interpreted in practice, I guess. Um, I will leave my question there and go to the, um, government members for twenty minutes, and then we'll divide up the remainder.
Thank you both very much for appearing again, um, before one of our committees. Um, Ms. Taylor, you have noted a couple of times, um, Ms. Boyd's previous evidence to us on the function of the GSE Act, and I just wanted to go to, to that evidence, where Ms. Boyd talking about the GSE Act, um, says that while you can't direct or tell a secretary what to do in terms of hiring or firing, somebody, ministers are, under our Westminster system, responsible to my, to Parliament for the way that departments operate and the actions of their department. In that context, it would be reasonable and appropriate for a minister to have conversations with the secretary about the structure of the department, uh, the performance of the department, and individuals within that department. And I think this, and she goes on to say, I'm quoting this for Hansard, I think the second reading speech, uh, for the recent GSE Act amendments explains that, and says that it is reasonable for a minister, while they can't direct a secretary on employment, they can certainly give feedback on performance and make suggestions. They're just not able, but, uh, sorry, I'll just keep with the direct quote, they're certainly not able to direct. Um, is your understanding, it appears to me that your understanding is consistent to that, but I don't want to assume. Is your understanding of the GSE Act and what it allows consistent with Ms. Boyd's testimony?
That's my understanding, and that was reinforced when I sought advice from the Chief Legal Officer in Transport for New South Wales on the Coordinator General position. So that was echoed through his advice.
Okay, so you'd sought, you'd sought advice on that for a different matter, but it, it was general advice about how that.
That's right.
And Ms. Carol, is that your understanding as well, consistent with Ms. Boyd? Yes? Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Taylor, um, I just want to ask about that, the interaction with Ms. Low. Um, uh, it seems to me that it would be, actually, let's take it away from Ms. Low. It seems to me that it would be, you're, you're in, um, people, uh, you're in recruitment. It would seem to me to be good practice to seek advice when there are changes in environment and con, and context about the operation of anything new, a system, rules, personnel, um, isn't that just consistent with good practice?
Yes, and that was exactly my intent in seeking Ms. Low's advice. As I said in my previous testimony, I didn't have intimate knowledge of what had occurred in the previous inquiry, or what so, and what steps had taken to lead to the change in the amendments. Um, and the amendments were very, you know, specific in saying that they couldn't direct them, but how you interpret that was what I wanted to test, hence my comment, testing the boundaries.
Okay, and again, I just want to confirm my understanding of what you've already provided us. Uh, so you're, you were, in wanting to be consistent with good practice, you were deciding to, and in your term, test the boundaries by having an interaction with Ms. Low. It, it wasn't seeking legal advice from Ms. Low, was it?
No, it was not.
Okay, so, so what, what was it then?
So, as, as I said previously, I knew Ms. Low had been involved in that previous inquiry, so had intimate knowledge of, um, of what had occurred to lead to those amendments. Additionally, it, Ms. Low is the Public Service Commissioner, so she's someone I, I have high respect for, and I respect her opinion, so I wanted to play out that scenario with her, and it, it purely was a scenario to say, if we did this, would that be in contravention to what the amendment is designed to achieve? Um, and they're the scenarios I put forward to her, which, um, Ms. Ward has asked me today.
Okay, so it was a hypothetical discussion. Uh, there was no direction from any, any office, whether it be the department or the Minister's Office, for you to seek that information, was you, you doing your due diligence?
It was me doing my due diligence, and to be clear, I had no discussions with the Minister's Office or the Chief of Staff, um, around the transition office, all of my dialogue had been with Ms. Carol. Um, and it's through that she had asked me to advise the secretary on the placement approaches, and it was in, with that intent that I spoke to Ms. Low.
Okay, so the creation of the transition office, um, is consistent with the GSE Act? There's not a suggestion that there's been a breach in how the transition office?
It's definitely not a suggestion by me, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. I might pass over to my colleagues.
Can, can I just briefly ask, and probably to Ms. Taylor, but please, either of you, in relation to the appointment of, um, DLOs? Have any previous ministers requested DLOs by name, in terms of your knowledge, without naming them?
I, I'll refer you to Ms. Carol, I haven't had a lot of involvement in the DLOs.
My knowledge is limited to the period that I've been with Transport. Um, I would say that, uh, in my experience, there has, uh, been one instance where a minister did request a DLO, be retained, it was a DLO that had been serving in that office, and for continuity purposes, the minister requested that that DLO continue. Um, I understand there may have been circumstances prior to that, but I was not, uh, in the Chief of Staff role at that time, so it wouldn't be appropriate for me to comment on the specifics of that.
Okay, would you regard that as having been a breach of process in any way?
Not, not really, I mean, that officer, in that instance that I've mentioned, went through Not, not really. I mean, that officer in that instance that I've mentioned went through, uh, a process by the department. Um, the rationale for that request was continuity and mitigation of disruption of circumstances. Um, ultimately, it was a matter for us to consider, and we declined the request in that instance.
Okay, thank you. Ms Taylor, in, just, just going back and confirming what we've heard about the, there's sort of been imputations that seeking legal advice, um, is indicative of alarm bells ringing. Um, in you, in your view, it, it's the case, isn't it, that that seeking legal advice was just doing due diligence as opposed to alarm bells ringing and needing to go and seek outside legal counsel?
Yeah, so on, as I, in my previous testimony, on occasion, we will absolutely seek legal advice, and it's for due diligence. It's to ensure that we're advising correctly based on the circumstances in front of that, in front of us, whether that be, um, a recruitment process or a matter of conduct that we, um, that we are working into. So it is, it, it's just due diligence.
And that, and that advice wouldn't necessarily relate to the veracity or the ability to set up a Transition Office per se, because that's in the GSE Act. It's like you said, recruitment processes, logistics of setting it up and all that sort of thing.
So I didn't, as I said, I didn't seek the legal advice in relation to the establishment of the Transition Office. I wasn't involved in that. But on, in general terms, yes, it could be on recruitment practices. With the Coordinated General, I did seek advice, but more so because Mr Collins was acting as the secretary, um, that I felt that I needed to speak to the Chief Legal Officer for due diligence to ensure that I could appropriately advise the Minister's Office.
And you know, before in earlier evidence, there was, um, I think there was a line of questioning about the minister making a suggestion on a, um, member of the panel, and then the final appointment though was, um, the decision of, uh, the secretary. There's no check back then with the minister, is there? There's like, the names are put up and then the decision is made, and there's no, there's no check back with the minister to say this is what we're thinking of doing?
I think it's important to, uh, differentiate what Ms Lowe was talking about was the appointment of a secretary. The secretary process is very different to what we're required to follow as, as appointments for senior executives. So it is not our practice that we would normally check back on a senior executive appointment with the, um, with the minister. Uh, no doubt the secretary would inform the minister if he was making a senior appointment to one of his direct reports to, to say that he was making that decision, but that would be more informing than seeking, um, decision or input.
Could I ask a follow up? I just wanted to go back to, um, this, the, the candidates. So just again confirming, there were other candidates put to the secretary, other internal candidates put to the secretary on his request in order to ensure that an appropriate group of people was considered. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, um, Ms Carol sought my advice, which is, again, um, I'm generally sought out for advice when we are looking at senior appointments across the organisation around individual performance and talent information to evidence why you might make a move or a selection process. Um, Ms Carol sought my advice on mentioning the name that was, um, that the Minister's Office had suggested, and was there any other candidates that I could think of, that I would suggest that Mr Sharp consider in relation to the appointment? And I provided, I think it was at least two names. I think one was the, we progressed with. Um, but that was for the temporary assignment. Once we went into an open recruitment process, the role was advertised both internally and externally. Um, and there was a range of applications put forward and a shortlist then was agreed by the, by the panel and then interviewed. And then through that process, the individual who had been temporarily assigned was successful in that placement.
Okay, so consistent with temporary roles in the public service, um, there, it's my understanding that there is this view to fill those roles internally with suitable candidates, and that there's a period of time which that person can, can stay in the role, but once that time lapses, it does go to external? That's correct? And so, so the, the original temporary appointment was consistent with normal practice in this?
Absolutely. So if, if we have a priority to respond to, um, the, the secretary has a myriad of powers under the Transport Administration Act, which is basically echoed through the GSE, that he can, uh, exercise his employment powers to use, to temporarily assign people, especially at level. And in this, in this case, um, the employee was at level. Um, and so we, we established the role and we put the person in as acting. Um, but Mr Sharp at the time did instruct me that he would like to go to an open recruitment process for the role. Um, and that was then concurred with by Mr Collins, who then took over not shortly, long after, in the acting capacity.
Okay, so just confirming, the original, the Transition Office was going to be stood up. Um, there was a need to have someone heading that office. Um, that was seen as to be something that, that needed to be done in a timely manner. Consistent with public service, um, practice, um, that position was considered from internal candidates. One that we're hearing has been suggested, but others which had been considered, um, by the department themselves.
Are you giving, the, uh, the member is giving evidence, she should put a question to the witness as opposed to setting out what her view is and ask that you direct a question.
To the point of order chair.
Rather than giving a commentary.
Yep, thank you.
To the point of order chair, um, context is allowed in the asking of a question. And, you know, the practice that we've seen today has been that questions, putting, um, statements to a witness have been allowed throughout the morning. So I'd request that I.
Okay, I think, I think there is a balance here, um, if we could come to the question. Thank you.
Um, so we have a temporary appointment consistent with policy and practice, uh, a desire, an appropriate desire, also fitting with policy and practice, to then go through the full external, in which, after which time the person who had been temporarily appointed won competitively that job. Is that correct?
I'll hear the point of order.
The phrase "consistent with policy and practice" is an interpretation by the member. It's not necessarily supported by the facts, and I ask that that particular part of the question be rephrased. It is an assumption and a conclusion about the evidence which this committee has not reached.
To the point of order chair. I'm asking the witness whether she agrees that it's consistent with policy and practice.
I did ask that.
You made a statement.
I did ask that.
Okay, order. Um, if the witnesses are at any time unclear about the question, they can ask for a rephrasing, but otherwise, um, please go ahead.
To answer the first question, um, the secretary can, uh, under his employment powers and policy and practice, temporarily assign someone to a role, which he chose to do. He then, as I said, made a decision that he would also like to go through an open recruitment process. So the role was advertised, and that was concurred with once Mr Collins took over the acting secretary role. So there was a change at that time. And through that process, a, um, a comparative assessment took place through an interview panel, and the selected candidate was the same person who was temporarily assigned but had gone through the process.
Uh, okay, and just quickly on that, so Mr Collins, who took over acting as secretary?
Correct.
Uh, agreed with and continued that process as established by Mr Sharp?
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to, just to finish up on the points that I was making earlier, um, it, it's the case, isn't it, that requesting a DLO by name is not actually a breach of any of the rules? That's correct?
I think that goes to, um, I think that really goes to the, 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 the questions that we, you know, have sought advice around. Um, I won't go into the legal advice, but certainly suggestions, uh, I mean, can be made, but a direction, um, should not be made in that respect.
But in terms of a request?
So in relation to policy, absolutely, and as Ms Boyd's evidence does, um, that's provided, is there is nothing wrong with, uh, the suggestion being made. The decision, however, still sits with the secretary, and that is the same, that would state, that would still apply in the DLO matter. So the secretary, if comfortable to make the decision to have that person conduct that role, then there's nothing wrong with that.
And, and can I just ask a follow up? So further to my colleague's, um, question about Mr Collins making the final appointment and not being, on, on evidence and estimates, not being directed. You're not aware of any other direction being made, are you?
In relation to the Transition Office?
Yes.
As I said, I, I was not involved in any of the conversations with the Minister's Office or the Chiefs of Staff, so I wouldn't be able to comment on that. But no, I was not made aware of any direction.
And, and then the other point was, who was actually on the panel for the Transition Office?
The panel was made up of four individuals. Um, I believe these papers have been made available. So usually the recruitment process is confidential, but they were three deputy secretaries, including myself. Um, two deputy secretaries, sorry, apologies, two deputy secretaries, including myself, Ms Carol and Mr Collins.
Okay, thank you.
So just to confirm, both of you are on the panel, and neither of you, because I didn't hear from Ms Carol, neither of you received a direction with regards to who would be successful?
I did, I did not.
No, we went through a recruitment process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we have 15 minutes left, so we'll do three lots of five, and we'll go back to the opposition.
Thank you. Um, you just said in relation to Mr Primrose's question that it's not a breach to, um, request a policy person, but in relation to DLO appointments, um, they are non-partisan, they're not policy roles, they're non-partisan roles that can't carry out policy work. That's correct, isn't it?
No, DLO roles can conduct a policy work, but they must.
They should be part, non-partisan in doing so.
They must be non-partisan appointments.
Um, and, uh, I think there was a suggestion that one, requested one person by name, but in fact, Ms Hayland's office requested five, um, people. She requested for the non-partisan roles, the head of the Balmain Labour campaign, a former young Labour president, a person who's known the minister for years from Labour staffing days, and a former Labour candidate and Labour Head Office staffer. That's five requests for specific people, um, for DLOs in her office. That's correct, isn't it?
I'm not aware of the backgrounds that you have mentioned, Mrs Ward, but if you would like to put the names to me, then I'm happy to respond to that.
All right, I'll come back and do that. Just before I go to the next question, I just clarify that you're coming back with that index number of that document on the legal advice. Thank you. Um, the names of those are, um, Mr Ash, Ms Stewart, Gilchrist, Purcell and Wise. Um, so they're the five that were requested that have those.
Um, yes, Ms Wise was not suggested for a DLO role, though.
Yes, but she was. Are you sure about that?
Not, she was never suggested for a DLO role.
We might want to clarify that.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to clarify that now. Her name only arose in the context of the Transition Office.
All right. Um, but there were the five requests, so is it your understanding that Ms Wise was identified by the Minister's Office for the two IC position, um, in the office? That's correct, isn't it?
That's correct.
Minister's Office called out, said we want Barbara Wise for the two IC position, uh, in the Transition Office.
That was put to me by the then Deputy Chief of Staff.
Yes, thank you. And who did they say they wanted for the top job?
Uh, no name was provided.
Okay. Can I go back to Melanie Stewart? So that was a DLO, um, that was requested, sorry, was it, was there a process for that, or was that a request from the minister?
That was a request.
From the minister?
We did not go through a, um, a process for that appointment.
All right, thank you. And so why then did she need to complete a future conflict of interest statement, um, uh, when she was summons to come back to the Minister's Office?
All of our officers under the Code of Conduct, um, are required to prepare, um, a conflict of interest declaration as the circumstances present. Um, I certainly did not make that request, I'm not aware. I was not aware at the time of the matters that were contained in that declaration.
All right, but she was requested, um, named, um, spent her time. What is the conflict that she had to, um, declare the future conflict?
As I said, it's, uh, the onus in making a conflict of interest declaration rests with, uh, each officer in accordance with the Code of Conduct. So she would have made that judgment call at the time.
All right, well, can we ask you to take on notice to provide clarification of what that future conflict was to the committee to be clear about what it was that she had to declare when she was requested to come back to the Minister's Office? I'm asking you what the conflict is.
Um, my understanding is that that document has been produced, um, and is the subject of, uh, a claim, so.
Do you know what the conflict is?
Um, that was subsequently, uh, drawn to my attention.
Mm-hmm, what is the conflict?
I, I'm not in a position to speak to that, because I understand that a claim of, uh, privilege has been made with respect to that document.
I think they've been dealt with by the arbiter, but.
I'm not aware of that, Mrs Ward.
Mm-hmm, all right. The, um, the Transition Office, so it was your previous evidence that a meeting occurred between the Chief of Staff and the former secretary regarding the Transition Office, um, and that Ms Wise was identified for the two IC position by Mr Gartra. Oh, that's correct, isn't it?
No, that's not correct. Ms, Mrs Wise was, um, put to me by the Minister's then Deputy Chief of Staff, subsequent to the meetings with Mr Gartra.
Okay, so Minister's Office suggesting it. Um, all right, and the, uh, last one, the, why was an individual who broke their employment obligations given an opportunity to resign prior to the findings, um, being issued, Ms Taylor?
The, um, the employee that in, in question was not given an opportunity. The employee took a decision to resign from his employment, which he has every right to do under his contract.
Mm-hmm. Did you share your findings, or have you made final findings from that investigation?
The investigation is now closed, and we have made recommendations of improvements to the DLO process.
I should think so.
Thank you. That's, that actually brings me to, um, the question I was about to ask you, which was, following all of that media attention and controversy over the DLO appointments, um, and the type of work that they, uh, may or may not be doing, what has changed in terms of, um, appointments of DLOs?
So we've made several recommendations to the way that DLOs are managed across the organisation. I recently wrote a letter to the Premier's Department to outline what those recommendations are. Do you mind if I just?
Please.
I'm happy to give a copy of this.
Thank you, that'd be very useful.
Yeah. Um, so we have made a number of recommendations, including the managerial contact during the time that they are DLO, that it's far more regular, and that there is actually a dual reporting line, so that is very clear with who they report to in Transport for New South Wales, as well as taking day-to-day direction from the, um, the Minister's Office, so that they have a senior person in Transport to liaise with. That the, that all DLOs be provided with a copy of the updated DLO handbook. So we, there has been some updates made to the DLO handbook, um, and that we're making sure that we are providing that to them, as well as before that they, um, sorry, before they do commence as a DLO, if they are a member of the, of a political party, that they do disclose that upfront.
Okay, that's great. Yes, if you wouldn't mind tabling that, that would be fantastic. Um, thank you. I think that's, um, oh, those recommendations, sorry, what's the date of that? When were those recommendations made?
Uh, so the recommendations were made as, at the end of the investigation process, which was, I'd have to take on notice on when we actually closed it. Um, but I recently sent this letter to the Premier's Department. I had had a conversation with Ms Dobbin's to say that we had identified some recommendations that the Premier's Department may want to consider in relation to their management of the DLO circular.
Okay, and when will the, um, uh, I guess the, the findings of that investigation that Ms Ward was talking about be made public?
It's not Transport for New South Wales' position that we would be making that report public as it goes to the conduct of, of an employee that we still have a requirement to protect the privacy and confidentiality of.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will pass to the government.
Thank you very much. Um, could I ask, I'm not sure which of you, both of you, if you could explain to me, there seems to be different processes which, uh, might apply to the appointment of DLOs. I wondered if you could sort of go through step by step what that, what those processes might be?
Um, I'll refer you to Ms Carol. So DLO appointments are made from existing staff. We don't go externally for DLO appointments, because, uh, the circular provides that that is, that the DLO appointment is a source of knowledge and skills to support the Minister's Office by being on the ground in the Minister's Office. We would ordinarily undertake an EOI process, that may be a formal or an informal EOI process, um, to make the appointments to that role. A number of candidates are usually considered, depending on the level of interest. Uh, and we would ordinarily, uh, provide a, a small shortlist to the Minister's Office of candidates that we would have confidence are able to do that role.
Okay, so there's an, essentially an internal pool that you're drawing from of people who have experience with transport.
Indeed, indeed. Indeed, indeed.
Yeah, okay, so they need to have that as prerequisite to.
They need to have experience in transport to be able to support the Minister's Office with the, I mean, their, their role is there as a liaison point with, with the department.
Okay, thank you. Would you, maybe for you again, Ms Carol, would you expect all transport staff who were former government staff to put in a conflict of interest form? Is that required?
What do you mean by former government staff?
So I think we were talking about someone, I don't know that the name was mentioned, I prefer not to, but I think there was questions about a conflict of interest.
Melanie Stewart?
Yeah, I prefer not to name, a conflict of interest form. Yes, so I just wondered if it was a requirement for those staff to put in a conflict of interest form?
It's not a requirement. The Code of Conduct places an onus on each public servant officer to consider the circumstances and if there is an actual perceived conflict to lodge a conflict of interest declaration form.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can, if I could just add to that?
Yes.
As the circumstances may change around that officer, they, they have the obligation to update their conflicts of interest that they've disclosed at the time that they, the circumstances have changed. So it's not a static document, it's, it's requirement to continually update on conflicts of interest should they be realised.
And that's, again, that's a common provision across the public service, isn't it? That's not specific to
Yes.
These kinds of roles.
So if their circumstances change, they're required, under the Code of Conduct, to lodge a new or update their current conflicts of interest.
Okay.
Can, can I just clarify? Are, are public servants entitled to have private political lives? Be they Labour, Liberal, Independent, Greens, doesn't matter. Is that the case or not?
Under policy, we would not typically ask about association to political parties, that is, of their employees' personal interest. The only time we would inquire around, or the only time we would want to consider that as is if in the role that they are playing in the organisation, it becomes a perceived or real conflict of interest that the organisation then needs to consider and appropriately manage.
Can they carry out political work while they're in the DLO role?
I believe Ms Carol has given you evidence on that before, Ms Ward. No, they are not able to.
That's very clear, isn't it?
I believe so, yes.
Hence the conflict of interest declaration.
Ms Boyd, I had another question.
The.
Sorry, order, what happened in terms of?
They'd finished.
No.
No, we had a pause and Ms Ward jumped in.
Right, okay, please go ahead. Go ahead, Dr Kane.
Ms Carol, were you involved in the update of the DLO handbook?
Yes, I was.
Could you explain to us what were the key changes?
There were a raft of changes made throughout that document. First and foremost, I should just note that the DLO handbook is a document. To my understanding, I'm not aware of any other department having such document, it's a guidance document. Ordinarily, our DLOs are in a, a support role where they are facilitating ministerial executive correspondence types, type matters. The DLO handbook sets out a raft of process flows with relation to things like supporting ministers' offices with ministerial correspondence, briefings, cabinet matters, et cetera. So that document was updated in its entirety last year, firstly to reflect the change of government and the change of ministers, so all of that was updated. But also, the department's processes had changed throughout the course of time since the last document was issued. So we quite rigorously went through, consulted with each of those line areas responsible for ministerial briefings, cabinet, et cetera, to make sure that the process flows that were included in the document were current. We also turned our mind to whether or not the settings in that document were reflective of what we, as a leadership, expected of our DLOs. So, so some changes were made. So for example, as I've previously given evidence, there were some things in that DLO handbook that we didn't agree with and were inconsistent with DLO practices across the board, such as DLOs previously under the handbook could not undertake policy work. That's a common practice for DLOs across the government sector and so we made sure that the handbook was updated to reflect that.
Thank you very much.
One last question, Mrs Ward.
Ah, thank you. Do you consider Minister Halen's use of DLOs unusual, considering you said it's typically for administration or administrative roles?
Look, I mean.
And given there were five requests for specific Labour affiliated people?
We went through last year a change of government after a very long period of time. In anticipation of the possibilities following the election, as a leadership group at Transport, we made a decision to change the DLO settings to uplift the capability that we would be offering each of our ministers' offices. So previously, we had more junior officers that were responsible for all of that administrative work. We changed that setting ahead of the election to ensure that we had transport offices of sufficient seniority and experience that would be able to provide guidance to the office in that establishment phase and that has carried through.
So nothing to do with Kieran Ash?
I don't have anything more to add on that.
And did Rob Sharp sign off on that?
Order, that does bring us to the end of our session. Thank you so much for spending this time with us. To the extent that there are questions taken on notice or supplementary questions, the committee secretary will be in touch, but that does conclude this panel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I please ask you to state your name, position, title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation?
Certainly. My name is Barbara Wise. I'm Executive Director of the Transition Office at Transport for New South Wales. And I would like to solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Excellent, thank you. Did you want to make a short opening statement?
No.
Okay, we will start with questions from the opposition.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms Wise, for coming along today and for your work. Ms Wise, I'm just going to ask some questions in relation to how you fit into the terms of reference. They're not an accusation, they're not a slur on you, they're just an attempt to factually put some matters for context. So I say that at the outset and you're here to assist and we appreciate that. I just want to understand how you fit into the picture of the terms of reference for the inquiry. So just factually, it's correct you previously worked in the Gillard government around the same time Minister Halen was a staffer for then Infrastructure Minister Anthony Albanese. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Was Mr Gartrell working for the federal government around the same time that you were?
I, the first time I met Mr Gartrell was on sometime in early April of twenty twenty-three. So I have no idea where Mr Gartrell was working at that time.
Thank you. I think factually he was, but that's, that's fine. So how long have you known him for? Just since April? We have never met him.
I had never met Mr Gartrell prior to being asked to go up to the Minister's Office.
Thank you. And can I confirm prior to working in the New South Wales Public Service, you worked for then Deputy Premier John Watkins?
I actually started in the public service prior to working for Minister Watkins. I started in the public service in two thousand at the Cabinet Office.
Thank you. Yep, but the documents produced to Parliament show that, so I just want to clarify that you did then work for Deputy Premier John Watkins.
I did, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Is it correct that the current secretary, Josh Murray, was Mr Watkins' Chief of Staff during that period?
No.
No, who was?
Emma, a woman called Emma was. I never worked with Mr Murray.
Okay, but Mr Murray did hold the position of Mr Watkins' Chief of Staff for a time, did he not?
I understand he did, but it was before I worked for Mr Watkins.
Okay. And so it's fair to say that you've known some of those people for some time and others for a longer time. For example, Ms, Minister Halen, you've known for a longer period. That's correct, isn't it?
No, it's not. I, I, if you could be clear about which people you're thinking I should know or not know. I, I don't know Minister Halen.
So you've never, prior to April, you've never met Mr Gartrell, you'd had no association with him, no interaction?
Yep, that's correct.
All right then. So in relation to.
When did you first meet Minister Halen?
I met Minister Halen at a Bus New South Wales function in, as part of my role as the Executive Director of Transport Partnerships. In late twenty twenty-two, she was the guest speaker at a function hosted by Bus New South Wales.
That was your first meeting with Minister Halen?
Yes.
So both working in federal offices, didn't come across each other, never crossed each other at any of those?
Not to my awareness. We may have been in the same room, but I never.
All right. If you'd never met Mr Gartrell, how did your name come up for the transition office?
I, I couldn't possibly answer that question. I'm sorry, I don't know.
All right. How, leaving out Mr Gartrell, how did your name get put forward? How did you become aware that you were being put forward for the transition office? Obviously, it must have been some communication with you.
Aware when I got a phone call on Friday the thirtieth of March, I got a phone call from Susan Carroll.
Yep.
And she asked me to go attend the Minister's Office the following Monday.
So you had no discussions with anyone prior to that? It was complete surprise to you that your name was being put forward? Is that fair?
Yeah, that is fair.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. So documents provided to Parliament show that you had a meeting with the Minister's Office fairly early on when they came to office. Who initiated that meeting?
I was asked by Susan Carroll to attend that meeting. I'm not sure beyond that how it was initiated.
So you were just simply contacted by Ms Carol who said what to you, you've been asked to come along to a meeting with no context?
No, well, I think, I don't, I mean, it was more than a year ago, but she did imply that they did want to set up some kind of transition office and it was about that and could I go to the Minister's Office on the Monday and talk to them about that.
Okay. And what did she say the purpose of that transition office was?
That wasn't clear to me and I figured I would find out when I got there.
Okay, these are not trick questions, they're just factual, setting out what the process was in accordance with the terms, so there's no office. So that you'd come along to a meeting on Monday and we want to talk about this transition office. Did you ask questions of her at that time about what are they thinking or what's the kind of process?
It was a fairly brief conversation because it was apparent that Ms Carol didn't have a lot of detail.
So this must have been a huge shock to you. You're called up to go into an office that hadn't existed before. You didn't ask further questions of Ms Carol at the time?
Certainly I asked, well, I asked where I should be showing up because I understand they were still operating out of offices at Parliament House rather than at fifty-two Martin Place. But it, there was, it became apparent in my conversation with Ms Carol that she did not have any detail that would be helpful to me about what, what was required.
Sure. Had you set up a transition office before?
I have not set up a transition office before. I've done a lot of work that is relevant to what I'm doing now in terms of running reviews and inquiries and things. That's certainly very relevant experience I've had.
Yeah, but sorry, but no doubt. But you had not run that. You had not set up a transition office in any previous roles, such that they would say, look, this person's done it before. We'd like to get her in to, to do that. What, what was your thinking then on why you were being asked?
I had no idea and I couldn't speculate why I was asked.
But it wasn't in relation to any experience in relation to setting up a transition office, is that what you're saying?
As I said, I couldn't tell you what the reasoning was. I, I cannot speculate on what was on the Chief of Staff's mind or anyone's mind.
And after you'd gotten that call from Ms Carol, did you make any other inquiries of anyone else about the transition office or what was going on or the like?
No, I, I did not.
So you didn't ask any questions of Ms Carol, didn't ask anyone else?
I did ask questions of Ms Carol, she just didn't have any detail to give me.
Okay, that's very interesting. All right, so it's correct that the ministerial office identified you to work in the office and then you had to relay what they wanted for the transition office to the secretary. That's correct, isn't it? Documents show that.
I'm not sure that I had to relay it, but they did talk me through what they had in mind and then they did send me an email afterwards which I forwarded fairly immediately to the secretary at the time.
All right, so you went to meet with the mid-office, presumably with the Chief of Staff, Mr Gartrell, with the minister, they set out to you what they wanted?
The minister was not present.
Okay, Mr Gartrell was telling you what they wanted?
Yeah, it was Mr Gartrell and the former Deputy Chief of Staff as well was there.
Okay, and so they conveyed to you, said this is what we want to do, can you go and tell the Secretary of Transport what we want to do with the transition, sorry, the Secretary of DPC, what we want to set up?
That is not how I would characterize the conversation. They did talk through, they were talking through a number of inquiries and reviews that they wanted to establish and that they needed something to facilitate that.
Yep.
They described something that, as you've seen in the documents, what ended up in that email.
Yep.
And then I just took that and went to speak to the secretary. It wasn't, not my decision to do any of those things. It was a call that he needed to be able to make, so I forwarded that information to him.
Okay, so then documents, did the, did the discussion, the documents show that you had, they briefed you, you put into, sort of summarised what it was that they were looking to achieve with what the new transition office would be and how it would work. Did the discussion then include what role you would play in, in that?
No.
What was your understanding of what role you'd play, having come from that meeting?
They asked me to go talk to the secretary about it, which is what I did. At no time did they talk to me about me being in a role.
It seems unusual, isn't it? You're going to a meeting to talk about setting up a transition office. They've asked for you, but they're not telling you what role you would play?
I can't comment that we just didn't have that conversation.
So what, just in, in the vernacular, it's just, we might be setting up an office and you might be part of it, can you go to the secretary, but you have no role or we're not going to tell you what the role is? I mean, you were just taking notes of the meeting?
I think, look, it's not that they described I would have no role, they just didn't tell me I would have a role. They identified me as someone who knew a lot about the agency. I have been at Transport for fifteen years now and that I would know where to find the right people in Transport that could help facilitate it.
Sure, but you go to the meeting, you take some notes.
Well, I didn't take notes. They, they wrote that up afterwards.
And there was no discussion whatsoever about any role that you would play, the no role or a role or anything in between?
No, there was not.
So what was the point of the meeting?
I think, well, I can't really speculate what they might have wanted to get out of it, but my interpretation was that they wanted to set this up and that I was somehow to be involved in making that happen.
All right, well, in your own words, can you summarise what actually occurred at the meeting?
As I have already described, between Mr Gartrell and the former Deputy Chief of Staff, they identified the different reviews they wished to run, they identified, they thought it should have, that this team should have representation from across the agency, that there would be someone in charge and a 2IC.
And what was the discussion around the 2IC?
That there would be one, that, that was sort of it.
And did you come away from that meeting with the view that you would either be in charge of the transition office or the 2IC? Did you get sort of an indicator of that during that meeting?
I got an indication that I was to help establish it. I didn't have a sense of what any kind of recruitment process would be from that meeting. Or in fact, who should head it. I was just to be involved in the establishment.
So you didn't think at that stage that you'd have necessarily an ongoing role in that
No.
transition unit? You thought your role was coming in to provide advice to set it up?
Yep.
And ultimately, though, you were suggested for the 2IC role, that's correct, isn't it?
I actually haven't seen those documents, so I, I take your word. I actually haven't seen those documents, so I take your word for it.
So you never, you are telling this committee under oath you had no awareness of your name being put forward to have any role whatsoever?
Only other than what I've heard in estimates and in other evidence today. I've not seen any documentation around that or had any conversations with anyone about it.
So a note-taking meeting, okay. What's the Transition Office currently working on?
We have got, still the Bus Task Force is happening. There is a final report of that due in May. And I also, the Secretary asked the Transition Office to oversee the TAHIE transition and perform the secretariat functions for the Steering Committee that is being run by Carolyn Walsh in terms of TAHIE transition. We also have a role in monitoring the implementation of some of the reviews, in particular, the Sydney Trains Review and the Bus Task Force recommendations.
And so is the rail review finished?
The rail review has given its final report to the Minister and, yes, it has.
It's finished?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, when did it provide it to the Minister?
As per its Terms of Reference, sometime late last year.
When, late last year, December, Jan, November?
I would have to take that on notice. Sorry, I don't remember the date exactly.
Alright, if you would. So the government hasn't published that yet?
Point of order, Chair.
Well, I'm just trying to establish what the work is, is being conducted.
I'll just hear the point of order first.
The point of order is that the question's about a specific report and the timing of when the government's going to reply is well out of the Terms of Reference for this inquiry.
This is the work that's being undertaken by the Transition Office and trying to establish what it is that they're... Can I finish my sentence without you talking over me?
Okay, order, order.
I don't speak over you. I don't interrupt you.
Can we stop talking at each other and direct your comments to me, to the point of order?
I'm trying to establish what the Transition Office did and is currently working on.
I do accept the point of order. However, to the extent that it is related to this particular witness and their role in the office, then we'll allow it.
Thank you. It is, it is... Alright, is the Transition Office taking on new work? Given it's a Transition Office, is this something that is going to continue managing the transition after a year in government? Or is there new work that you anticipate might be taken on by it?
The roles are temporary roles and people in those roles are currently there until the end of June 2024.
Alright, and do you anticipate that the workload will require that to continue, given?
The work will need to be managed in some way, whether or not it's via a Transition Office or some other method would be a matter for the Secretary.
Mm-hmm, and so in your opinion, given your role in the Transition Office, do you anticipate that that would need to continue, given the workload that you presently have, or that that should be finished by June?
Sorry, which workload?
The workload in the Transition Office, do you expect that that work, TAHIE, the rail review that's been provided, that will be sufficiently finished to close the office by June? Or do you think that there's ongoing work that would be required to continue the existence of the Transition Office?
The, in terms of the ongoing, so what will need to occur is that there will need to be some kind of oversight over implementation. Who manages that is not a call for me to make. I could-
Do you have a view?
I could provide advice to the Secretary, but it's going to be his call. The TAHIE transition will take a bit longer to do. The Treasurer committed to having legislation by June of this year, but obviously there's a lot more to do in the setting up an entity than just getting a bill through the Parliament.
Sure. You are the head of the Transition Office, so it's fair that questions are asked about your perception of the workload and whether you think that, you know, you have capacity to complete that by June. Do you have capacity to complete the current workload by June? Or do you anticipate that will have to continue beyond June?
The work will need to continue beyond June, but whether or not it's the Transition Office is not for me to decide.
Who else would take that on if not the Transition Office?
Transport is going through a rework of its operating model. I'm probably not the best person to ask about the detail of all of that, but it's certainly under active consideration by Chief People Officer and the Secretary around how that workload would be managed.
You would have a role to play surely in putting forward a view, given that you are the head of the Transition Office?
It's fair to say my advice would probably be sought as part of that.
Mm-hmm, and what we, alright. You talked about the TAHIE, so rail review's been provided, TAHIE. Do you have a copy of the TAHIE Terms of Reference?
Not at hand, no.
No, can you provide that on notice?
For this, there is a Terms of Reference for the Steering Committee. I would have to ask, yeah, I would have to check whether I can provide that.
Thank you.
I'll hear the point of order.
I'm not sure that the TAHIE Terms of Reference, in terms of the Committee, again, I'll make the previous point, that that's well outside the scope of this particular inquiry. There are other forums with which to request.
The scope of this inquiry refers to any other related matters. This witness is the head of the Transition Office. We're establishing, given it's a Transition Office, whether the workload is sufficient to continue and what is required. I've put that squarely to the witness. I think it's absolutely reasonable. They're asking in relation to the TAHIE issue which she has raised in her evidence that we follow that through.
Sorry, can I just clarify which point of the Terms of Reference are you claiming this is related to?
Any other related matters, because it's the creation of Transition Offices in the government and any other related matters.
Yeah, the creation of, though, not the ongoing work of. If you could bring it back to a question that's actually directed to the Terms of Reference.
Certainly. Well, in relation to any other related matters into the Transition Office.
Sorry, just to clarify, that's not what the Terms of Reference say. They say in relation to the creation of the Transition?
Yes, and a separate point is I, which is the any other related matters. That is a separate-
To the creation of?
No, I will separate out the creation and I'm happy to just submit that this question goes to any other related matters, given this is an inquiry into, fine, I'll move on. There's a clear campaign being run to cover up, that's fine.
Order, order.
Alright, thank you.
Order.
The-
No, no, sorry, order.
Well, I have one minute left here.
Yes, well, you shouldn't criticise the Chair's ruling.
I have said I'll move on here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Wise, did the Transition Office write the independent reports? Or the, did external experts write those review reports?
Different reviewers had different practices, so it would depend on the individual reviewer as to how much input they would seek.
Alright, and given, okay, and one last one. What's the total expenditure on staffing costs for the Transition Office, given it's been established?
That's probably best answered by the Chief People Officer, but I can take it on notice. I understand this has been provided-
Well, can you take that on notice? You are the head of the Transition Office. Will you take that on notice to provide the expenditure?
I can, I'll take it on notice.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wise, for attending. Can I just, so just recapping, so the, I'm not, I've never been in government and I've never really been in the opposition either, so this is all very new and interesting to me. But we have 12 years of the Coalition being in government. We then have Labour coming in and they take office. How big is Transport? Transport's one of the biggest departments, presumably.
Yeah, I understand we've got about 30,000 employees.
Okay, so 30,000 employees. There's a bunch of stuff that the new government wants to get done. It's already identified a bunch of reviews by that point, is that correct? Before it sets up the Transition Office, presumably they-
That's my understanding.
Yeah, had some ideas. They'd certainly been saying it during the elections. So they decide to set up a Transition Office and, given that it's not already set up, they need somebody to help to actually set it up. I understand that you were previously the Point-to-Point Transport Commissioner.
Yep.
You have 15 years in the service. You were an Executive Director of Transport Partnerships immediately prior to this position, is that right?
That's correct.
And you also won the Public Service Medal? You were given a Public Service Medal for your work, is that correct?
Yes, in relation to the Point-to-Point Transport Reform.
Okay, so you were identified as a competent and capable public servant who could advise-
Very nice of you to say, thank you.
This incoming government on how it should transition and basically get a hold on this behemoth that is Transport for New South Wales, is that correct?
I couldn't comment on what was behind my being asked, but what you've said before that is all factually correct, yes.
Thank you. You struck me as being a little humble, so I wanted to put that on the record. So after that first initial meeting, you go and speak with the Secretary, you were put back to the Secretary. What happens then, between then and you actually being appointed? Is there, are you immediately put to work to set up that office? What are the next kind of steps?
Yeah, I was, the Secretary did ask me to go about working with the People and Culture Team to establish some temporary positions to sort of scope out what it is we would need in order to support all of the reviews. And the Secretary, I can't recall exactly when it was in those following days, but he did ask me to act in the role and that there would be a recruitment process that would also be an external process.
So you were put in the role temporarily?
Yes.
Pending the official recruitment process?
Yes.
Okay, and now that, I guess, taking the line of questioning from Mrs. Ward, when we look then at the Transition Office being temporary by its nature, your role as head of the Transition Office will come to an end as well. Is the understanding you will then go back to some, you know, to another executive director position or?
So when I was appointed, the appointment letter indicated I would go back to my role as Executive Director of Transport Partnerships.
Okay, alright, so there's, yeah, so there wasn't a risk taken on with you sort of taking on this role and it only being sort of a temporary thing. You've got, you know that you are going back, okay. Thank you. I think that's all that I had, actually, so I'm going to pass on to the government.
Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Wise, for coming today. I wondered if we could draw out a little bit more the extent of your experience in Transport. So you mentioned that you'd been working in the area for 15 years. So in that time, you would, were you aware of last time there was a Transition Office? Were you, where?
So I was, I was at Transport when the last change of government happened. I was in the executive but not as senior as I am now. And I did have a role in helping with, for example, the creation of Transport for New South Wales in terms of helping to decide where functions would go and those kinds of things. And I did at that time also, in that formation of the new agency, obviously everything got thrown up in the air and I applied for roles elsewhere and so on.
Sure. So despite it being, there being so few Transition Officers so infrequently, you still were around and tangentially involved in the changes that arose from a change in government last time?
Oh, definitely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And could you, perhaps drawing on the questions from the Chair, describe a bit more the different, the range of roles that you have performed within Transport over that time?
Sure. So I arrived at Transport for New South Wales in 2009. I would say that even when I started my career in the Cabinet Office, Transport was the first area of policy that I worked in. So I have a long and deep connection and enjoyment of my working with Transport. The, at my first role at Transport for New South Wales was working with the Bus Service Planning Team. There was a set of bus reforms done by the former Labour Government in the mid 2000s and there were changes to bus networks as a result of that. And I worked with the bus planners on those changes. And from there, I was asked to go and work as part of a restructure. It wasn't the one that created Transport for New South Wales into area and lead a team that had, it was a few different functions. First was the scheme, so the school student transport scheme, the taxi transport subsidy scheme and what is now called the school drive subsidy. The other team I had under me there were the regulatory staff that did the Passenger Transport Act, so they regulated buses, taxis, hire cars and so forth. And the third area that I had under me in that role was community transport. Which, and they were more operational and administrative rather than policy roles. When Transport was created, I applied for a role in the policy team and worked in Transport Policy for a few years. I was asked to go and run the Secretariat for the Point-to-Point Transport Task Force and we worked with Professor Sturgis and Professor Parry on those reforms for the former government. And I then worked on the implementation of those reforms. And then Minister Constance appointed me as the Point-to-Point Transport Commissioner. After that, I then, with the 2019 election, sorry, yeah, the 2019 election, Mr. Staples was the Secretary and that was when the RMS and Transport for New South Wales was brought together. I was then asked to go and work in the establishment of the Regional and Outer Metropolitan Division, bringing together the functions of transports and roads. And I ran the public transport side of that for the Regional and Outer Metropolitan Division.
Okay, right, extensive, thank you. So you mentioned a former minister. How many ministers do you think you would have worked for or under in that time?
I haven't counted, but it's basically every minister since 2000. I've had something to do, well, sorry, Transport Minister or any minister, but Transport Ministers, as many as there have been since 2009. But ministers generally, I don't know, would be dozens.
Okay. And you spoke about the point-to-point role and you said you were appointed. How were you appointed? What was the process?
So that's a statutory office. I believe the Public Service Commissioner may have spoken to processes around that this morning. It was a cabinet appointment, but there was no merit selection appointment. I was, the Minister just appointed me.
Okay, thank you. Noting your point-to-point experience that we've just touched on there, was that relevant to this current role, do you think?
Certainly, the work in supporting the Secretariat for the Point-to-Point Transport Task Force was directly relevant to the work in the Secretariat for the reviews I've been working on now. Very similar, knowing what questions the reviewers might want to ask, knowing where in the department to get that information, helping them to formulate the policy advice back to government, getting the, doing the community consultation, getting inputs from experts, external stakeholder engagement, those kinds of things. They are all directly relevant to what I'm doing now.
And could you, and I know Ms. Boyd's observation that you do seem quite humble and so I don't want to make you uncomfortable, but could you explain a bit what your Public Service Medal was awarded for? Because it seems that it might have been around the work that we were talking about with the point-to-point.
Yeah, it was. It was related to, and I don't have the citation here, but it was related to the work on the Secretariat for the Point-to-Point Transport Task Force and then the subsequent implementation of the reforms and how they were carried out and how I engaged with stakeholders in that process, because it was a very difficult time for a lot of people. Yeah.
Okay. And relatedly, when you finished in that role, were you aware of how your time had been assessed by the then ministers and government?
No, I don't think so.
Well, can I just remind you of some of them, let me know if these ring a bell. Barbara Wise, well, Barbara Wise has ensured safety is a key priority for all providers and that riders feel safe as they utilise point-to-point transport options. Do you remember who said that?
No.
It was Minister Constance, actually. And this one from Minister Tool thanked Mrs. Wise for her contribution to the transport sector throughout New South Wales, including in regional New South Wales. Barbara has made an exceptional contribution to the modernisation of transport service delivery in New South Wales through her leadership. The New South Wales Government has been supporting the transition of the industry, the transition of the industry into the 21st century. I would have thought that if you've got praise from former Coalition Ministers like that, when they asked you to take on that role in the Transition Authority, you wouldn't have lacked the confidence to do it, presumably?
I thought it was going to be a big job, but I thought I would have had the ability if I were given the opportunity. I thought it was going to be a big job, but I thought I would have had the ability if I were given the opportunity.
We're good? Okay. Um, how long do we have left? Twenty-five minutes, about eight minutes? Okay, go ahead. Back to you. You're good? Okay. We're good. Oh, looks like we're going to have an early lunch. This is very exciting. Um, well, thank you very much um, for your attendance and um, to the extent that questions were taken on notice, or there is any um, supplementary questions, the committee secretary will be in touch. But that does bring us to our lunch break. Uh, we will be back at two o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Earlier hearing for this inquiry, you do not need to be sworn in again. Would you like to make a short opening statement?
No, thank you Chair, I'll go with what I said last time.
Excellent, so I think we're going to keep with the timed, yep, we're going to time between us, excellent, so love it to you Mrs Ward.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Mr Murray for coming along, making yourself available to assist the committee further today, we appreciate it. Mr Murray, do you know where Kieran Ash is at the moment?
No, I don't, Mrs Ward.
Do you know where Scott Gudrell is at the moment?
No.
No idea?
I'm using the cafe across the road.
Probably.
Maybe you can assist the committee with the whereabouts?
Yeah.
Being facetious.
Alright, I am sure, just to clarify, have you familiarised yourself with the terms of reference for the inquiry?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay, and have you been watching this morning, so you're familiar with what's being said?
I have had other things to do, but I've kept an eye on some of the proceedings, yes.
Thank you, okay, that's great. So, can I just ask, in relation to Kieran Ash and Scott Gudrell, obviously being the subject of questions and pertinent to this inquiry, why didn't Transport provide their contact details for the inquiry to assist?
It's not something that I was involved in, Mrs Ward, but they are not employees of Transport, therefore I can't answer any more about the arrangements for today's committee.
Alright, you are obviously the Secretary, you're able to provide that information through the committee to assist it. Is there a reason, or are you part of that decision-making to not provide contact details for them so that the committee could try and get their assistance with this inquiry?
Again, it's not something that I'm privy to or am responsible for in terms of the contact details of private individuals.
Alright, who do you say is responsible?
I couldn't answer that question, it's surely a matter for the committee.
Well, but you are the Secretary of the Department, obviously this is something that's important to the Parliament, such that the upper house has moved that we conduct this inquiry, is it something you'd consider obtaining their information?
It's not something that I have been aware of in terms of who is appearing in front of this committee. I received an email from the Clerk to this committee asking me to appear, and despite the fact that I have appeared before and have appeared in estimates hearings with yourself where we have discussed these issues, I thought it was important to appear today. That has been the length of my involvement as the Transport Secretary in determining witnesses for this committee, I can't help you any further on that.
Thank you. The committee has gotten in, has been in touch though with Transport for New South Wales and has sought assistance from the department to obtain or to get in touch with them. You're the Secretary of that department and we've been told that the department won't provide their details, so you were...
I'll hear order, I'll hear the point of order.
Have you even finished the question?
Order, I'll hear the point of order.
I didn't think we had to wait till the question was finished.
No, we don't, go ahead. and we were provided with that detail from Transport, so I think this line of questioning is not appropriate given that Mr Murray has already said that it is not in his remit, we've been told why.
Okay, it's helpful information, but it's not a point of order. Mr Murray, if you want to provide information of the kind just specified by Dr Kane, go ahead, back to you, Mrs Ward.
Thank you. Mr Murray, you are the Secretary of Transport for New South Wales, it is within your remit, I would respectfully put to you. The information has been that Transport will not provide that information to us, what do you say about that?
Mrs Ward, all I would say is you've seen from today's appearances at the committee that Transport has been very willing to help. The staff members of Transport, myself included, have given up their day to come and assist the inquiry. I can't comment any further on the availability of private citizens, but I would suggest my own personal feeling, which is it is not Transport's role to give up contact details of people that don't work for Transport.
Alright. Whose role is it then? Is it DPC's role to obtain contact details for former public servants in relation to an inquiry about their time in the public service? Whose role do you see that as being?
I couldn't answer that question.
Why not?
They are matters for the committee which I am sure have been taken into consideration during deliberatives. This committee has been running since August last year, therefore those decisions would be taken during that time, I can't comment on the processes behind who the committee wishes to call.
Mr Murray, I put it to you that it doesn't matter about the length of time this committee has been running, it doesn't matter how many times people have or haven't appeared, and I appreciate you are busy, but this is a parliamentary inquiry and we do appreciate your assistance, but it's also an order of the House that we do inquire into this information. So, I'm asking not about privacy and not about other departments, but about your role as Secretary of the Department to assist the committee or for DPC. And I think your initial answer was you don't know, but I think the answer from the Department is it won't provide them, what is your position as Secretary?
Well, that position from the Department, I haven't seen that, I'm happy to have a look at that and discuss it with my colleagues that were in contact with the committee. I myself emailed the committee back to say that I would be available, but I know more broadly the organisation responded to the request. If I just consider though Mr Gartrell, he has never to my knowledge been an employee of Transport, therefore providing contact details I don't think would be appropriate.
Alright, so...
But again, I'm speculating because I wasn't involved.
I just want to be clear on your position as Secretary, that's all I'm trying to ascertain. And so, will you assist the committee to provide that information or is it your evidence that you won't take any further steps to provide information about the contact details for those witnesses?
No, I think they're matters for the committee, that doesn't seem that, something that I would be involved in.
Okay. So, upon the DLO scandal becoming a media matter, did you familiarise yourself with what had occurred prior to beginning your appointment?
We're casting our minds back to third quarter last year. Certainly I was aware of how those matters came into the media and discussed it with my Transport colleagues as to the awareness that they had, I need to be more specific in terms of the question.
Well, did you familiarise yourself with what had occurred before your appointment? So you're aware of what was going on and in this role, it was obviously pertinent that you be across it. I'm asking you to elaborate for the committee whether you familiarised yourself, can you give us some detail of what steps you took?
Sure, the matters were well canvassed as they played out through estimates hearings was one place, the, obviously through media inquiries and in discussions with my colleagues who had been involved at the time or were more aware of the scenarios because that occurred before my time at Transport.
Okay, what were you told by your colleagues?
Just as has been reported, that matters were raised and discussed and that that was the antecedence of those issues. Again, you have to be specific in terms of what question you'd like me to answer.
I'll be specific, what were you told by your colleagues? Can you be more specific about what you were told about the DLO issues and this inquiry?
Well, I don't think I can be more specific, I'm aware of the DLOs, the DLO inquiries that came in, the DLO media inquiries and then the issues that led to Mr Gartrell referring documents that were received understanding order 52 to, back to the department to be investigated.
And what else were you told by your colleagues about the inquiry and the DLO issues, specifically as it pertains to your role as Secretary?
Well, we had discussed the past elements in that terms of how Mr Collins, who's given evidence on this before, how he had discussions with Mr Gartrell at the time, what led to those comments and then how it was dealt with, they were the main issues pertinent. But I'd have to again go back over that timeframe to look exactly what you were asking for.
Alright, well if you could take that on notice, that would be helpful to assist the committee about what steps you took to familiarise yourself and what you were told, you've raised that you were told issues by your colleagues that would help to confine that information to a more specific, sorry, to elaborate, to make it more specific for the committee to understand what steps you took and what you were told.
Sure.
At that time in your role as Secretary.
And you know, I think I have been clear in previous hearings as to some of those discussions in terms of the estimates hearings of last year, we canvassed that issue in quite a load of detail.
Alright, in the limited time that we had, and we have just some more specific questions about that today, so appreciate your assistance. So, do you know how many DLOs were requested or approved without a recruitment process for Minister Howland's office?
No, I don't.
Can you take that on notice?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that it's important to put some matters to you, it's not a gotcha moment, this is just forensically to assist the report, to make sure we've tied up some loose ends, given that it seems that we don't have another... Is there something funny, Miss Kane?
Okay, order.
Alright, sorry, I thought you were laughing. No, this is a serious matter and it's important that we tie up some of these loose ends, we don't have another hearing date. The report of this committee could potentially make a finding about the conduct of DLOs in Transport from the information we've obtained, and so to assist on that, could you take on notice, as you said, the exact number of DLOs that were requested and joined the Minister's office in your capacity as Secretary for Transport?
Yes, I will take that on notice, I believe that number itself has been tabled previously, which I'll clarify. The only reason I don't have that to hand is obviously this was several months before I started at Transport and I was focused after coming on board in the issues that stemmed from that point forward rather than going back over to previous secretaries' time in the role.
Alright, but a number have been requested and/or placed since your time, so I think it would assist the committee to be clear about those. I've raised some, but for the sake of clarity, it would be good to have an exact number, it's transparent, it's public money, so I think that would be helpful. So, whose idea was it to send, we've had evidence this morning, I hope you said you had seen this morning what's occurred. We had some information about a letter that has been sent. Whose idea was it to send to the Premier's Department advice to update the DLO requirements?
When the investigation began, that was referred to me by Mr Gartrell. One of the first items that I undertook to do was to alert the Secretary of the Premier's Department of the course of action that I intended to take.
Was that Mr Duncan at that time or was that...?
No, it was the current Secretary of the Premier's Department. And then I also alerted the Secretary of the Public Service Commission, or the Commissioner rather, who you've heard from earlier today, that these matters were under investigation. During the course of the investigation itself, which was handled by our Chief People Officer and Chief Legal Officer, the items were updated to Maslow on a semi-regular basis is my advice. At the culmination of that inquiry, the Chief People Officer and Chief Legal Officer alerted me to the findings and what had, or rather to the outcome, which was that the DLO in question had resigned during the course of the investigation. And my question at that time was, have we updated the other stakeholders in government who we had committed to keeping involved and informed during that process?
Alright.
And I believe that's where that letter has then stemmed from in terms of ensuring that that circle is closed. When I spoke to Mr Draper at the initiation of the investigation, I said that I would ensure that any materials that we felt were relevant across government would be referred on to the PSC and to the Premier's Department.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. The letter doesn't have a date, are you able to take on notice the date of this letter?
Sure.
Thank you. So, that was updated, did you say there's been continuous updating or there was one round and that's now completed?
No, my advice that during the investigation, Maslow was updated a number of times by the Chief People Officer.
Alright, were you involved in that updating? So what involvement did you have and what was your import into the updating of the DLO requirements?
I've had no involvement with the updating of the DLO requirements except to be advised of those outcomes that we are now considering and we've worked on a number of them and referred them to central government to see if there is a broader uptake that is desired.
Alright. Why was there a need for a letter? I guess it begs the question, if there was no issue with the recruitment or appointment or request for DLOs in Minister Howland's office, what fueled the need for this revision and this letter? If there's no problem with those five or so that were recruited or were obtained or requested specifically, what brings about the necessity for this letter?
I think everyone on this committee would accept that Transport has been under scrutiny in terms of its supervision of DLOs over the period. That naturally raises a question for staff or for stakeholders or for ministers in that is everything being managed and supervised in the way that it should be? I think we have got to demonstrate that that's the case. We have to show current DLOs or those aspiring to be DLOs that they'll be well supported when they put their hand up to support a government and take on additional duties as a DLO is required to do. So as a result, I think these are helpful in terms of how we provide extra support to our DLOs. Now, as you heard from previous witnesses, the DLO handbook that is provided in Transport and has been in Transport, my understanding, for some time is a measure that goes above and beyond the Premier's Department circular, which is the main bible if you like for DLOs. Ours is an additional document that then supports the administration of DLOs.
Thank you.
These extra findings are again to bolster that administration and mostly relate to supervision while in the ministerial offices.
Okay, so do you think that perhaps Transport didn't live up to its duty or failed somehow or there were some gaps in its duty throughout the process and the matters raised in this inquiry and specifically in relation to Mr Ash? We haven't seen the outcome of that investigation, he's now left, so we don't have answers about that. Do you think that perhaps there were some shortfalls in that recruitment process which has perhaps informed this change?
Look, from my point of view on coming into this role on the 14th of August last year, what I've seen is our DLOs, who are a hardworking group of individuals, have been subject to a huge amount of scrutiny, those matters have played out publicly and in the Parliament and an investigation has been held inside Transport and at the end of that, a young person has lost their employment through...
I think he resigned actually, I don't think he lost his employment, he resigned.
The matter is still that he is no longer in that employment. What I'm saying is even from that base understanding of the timeline that I saw upon coming into the Secretary's role, I think it's important that we take whatever steps required to have the most robust process. And I think the biggest takeout for us as Transport on that and conveyed in that letter is just providing that real lifeline back into the organisation. When you're working in either Parliament House or a ministerial office...
Do you have limited time, so I've got two minutes, I'm just going to move on, thank you. So, does Transport take accountability for the failures of Mr Ash's conduct?
I take accountability that it was a difficult time for Transport and that we could do better to make sure that the administration of all of our DLOs is not called into question and I want to make sure that anyone putting their hand up to be a DLO feels extremely supported.
Thank you. Did Mr Ash choose to leave or was he asked to leave the position?
Look, I wasn't privy to that investigation, Mr Ash resigned is what I've been advised.
So, there was a failing in the process, you agree with that?
I didn't say there was a failing in the process, I said that by any standard, having this played out publicly with questions asked in the Parliament and the press is not a place where a public service employer would want to be and therefore steps have to be taken.
But this is the House of Review, it's our job to conduct inquiries particularly into transparency and accountability. Are you questioning the veracity of what we're doing or this role or the time spent or the ability to inquire into public monies being spent on public service roles and their compliance with requirements and guidelines?
No, Mrs Ward, I wouldn't have spent the number of days that I have in this chair if I felt that that was the case.
Thank you.
The elements are, I want to make sure that as a representative of the public service and as a large employer, I want to make sure that I have the best processes available to me. Other government departments may feel that their current processes are suitable and the Premier's Department may have a view on applying them.
I've just got a few seconds, so I'm just going to cut in there, thank you. So did Transport live up to acceptable standards in your view with Mr Ash and with questions around DLOs or do you think it could do better?
Transport acted in all times in relation to the Premier circular and conducted an investigation when, immediately when claims were raised that it hadn't lived up to standards, that investigation was followed through. That's all I can really comment on today.
Thank you, and thank you again for coming in again in front of this inquiry on this topic. Just in relation to, and I will refer to Kieran Ash because it's sort of, I guess he's the DLO that put all of this off. I think even the Premier ended up saying that Ash had overstepped the mark. There's reasons why a person may act outside the scope of their, you know, their employment or their role. In this particular case, are we to take it from the response of now putting in additional procedures or updating the handbook for DLOs, that a view was raised internally that this was a matter of not understanding the role?
I don't, I wouldn't characterise it that way Chair, I understand that there's been lots of comment made about conduct or actions. A lot of it has been very unclear and I think that's where Transport would like to make sure that this is not a grey area going forward. You heard commentary earlier from my colleagues about whether policy was in or out of the guidebook. In a previous hearing, Mrs Ward has commented about whether media is in or out of DLO requirements. What we've sought to do as a result of the last eight months is ensure that we put out of the grey zone any of those elements as much as we possibly can. Asking a departmental staffer to come and work in a Minister's office comes with it different duties and a different supervisory regime. It's a split supervisory regime between the Chief of Staff and the employer back at Transport. So we have to make sure that that is as clear as we can possibly make it, but there will always be some level of, if not conflict, but questioning about, okay, well I now need to do this but I also have these responsibilities for the department. So, and at the same time, we have departmental staff who are providing that same support through legislation, through policymaking or through media even, from the department to the Minister's office but doing it in a remote capacity, often through the DLO. So there's lots of areas here where we need to make sure that we have the right systems in place. If we can provide additional help through the DLO handbook, then I believe that's a good place to have it. It's one of the actions that is in place to make sure that each staff member leaving Transport for Parliament House or Martin Place does so with a copy of that guidebook and has had the opportunity to ask questions about what's in it and if any questions or concerns arise, establishing that link back to the department to say if there is... Establishing that link back to the department to say, if there is any question that you have, you can come straight back to this senior staff member. These are all elements that are in place and that are being focused on so that we don't have a question where the public, the Parliament asks a question and says, was this adequately handled?
And then presumably then, if we get another situation in a year's time where we have someone who has overstepped, um, the mark, um, as by the Premier, uh, then the response from Transport cannot be, uh, that they didn't understand that role. So, um, I guess that's putting extra sort of expectations on, on DLOs going forward.
That's right, and I, I do believe that's actually what we will be left with, which is someone has been provided the, uh, the handbook, they've had the opportunity to ask questions. Certainly, the arrangements that we have in place with the minister's offices have all been, um, repeated and reinforced as a result of these recent months of inquiries in terms of not leaving things unsaid or questioned.
Hmm.
Um, it's a busy time for both the organisation and the minister's office. There's always a free flow of information, so making sure that things don't get left behind or lost in the translation is very important, and that's been clarified over recent months.
Um, so that's, I guess that's good news in terms of, you know, the way that we, things happen and the ways we then respond to it is in many ways more important than the, um, the thing that caused it. Although, you know, I share some of the frustrations, Mrs Ward, on, on not getting to the bottom of, um, what has happened in this particular case. Um, however, it's positive to see reforms going forward to clarify that role. Has anything been done in terms of clarifying the appointment process? And particularly this issue around, um, sensitivities when someone has been really involved, um, in a party or in, with a particular minister? Um, has there been any reforms to that process?
Certainly, and I, I think, um, Minister Halen has spoken about this previously in, um, either in the chamber or in estimates. But the view taken by the minister's office that, um, following on from these inquiries, they would not, uh, request DLOs, um, even though that was not mentioned in the Premier's, uh, circular,
Hmm.
that they would not request, uh, any individual DLOs, that instead they would ask for particular skillsets or policy areas and that the department would respond with nominations. Um, that was clarified by the Minister's Chief of Staff to me and that's what's been in place with any subsequent appointments.
Um, my colleague, Mrs Ward, was, was talking about, you know, the value of this committee as being a committee of, um, you know, responsible for holding, um, you know, the government and public sector to account. Um, and I, you know, share the, the views that it's important that we, that we do this work and I think this has been a good issue to, to investigate. Um, would you say that this, you know, as painful as it may have been, um, in terms of media coverage and all the rest of it, that this has been a useful focus in terms of building a better way of doing things going forward?
Yes, I do. I see a scenario where, upon coming into the role, people were not sure about how they raised. We heard it referred to in this room as concerns or questions. Discussions were held, but they weren't bottomed out at the time and I think we've put in place the infrastructure, um, and the review processes that mean that we do need to support staff taking on these roles where they do have to operate with a level of ambiguity occasionally about who their, uh, line manager is, and that always creates concern in any organisation. It's, it's an area where questions can come up. So I do think that certainly at Transport, we understand the scenario more and we have a clear structure as to who is supervising any of the DLOs across our three ministerial offices.
Thank you. Um, I'll rest there for this round and hand over to the Government.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Murray. I just wanted to ask, you've appeared for this uh, and other committees quite extensively since your last appearance at this inquiry, haven't you?
I have, yes.
So how many opportunities have members of this committee had to ask you questions about the matters that we're hearing about today?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. I do feel, uh, in my relatively short time, uh, in the Secretary's Chair, uh, I do feel as though I've been in this room, uh, a number of times and I'm, state for the record that I'm very happy to do so. And I do absolutely believe in the review processes that Mrs Ward referred to. Um, I think it's also important that I stress my responsibility to the thirty thousand Transport staff members and workforce that are currently out there today uh, in the wake of that extreme weather event across the weekend, trying to restore services, um, across the state. Um, we have had some particularly difficult elements. Uh, our Transport teams have responded to uh, direction from the SES and the police, but are now getting materials and services back, uh, online as quickly as possible. And I'm sure there's been plenty of coverage playing out, um, today, but I just would want to add my, uh, thanks and support to all of those who dug in across the weekend um, when they were probably looking for some time, some downtime with their families. Um, in regards to my role though, in between being available to the Parliament, I have also ensured, uh, that I have travelled the state, I have visited every one of our one hundred and seventy-three Sydney trains stations, I've travelled on every light rail service and ferry service. I haven't quite made it to every bus stop, but I'll add that to the list. But I find that is important for me to understand when we talk in this room and others about the services required by the people of New South Wales and the improvements that they require, that I can talk with some first-hand knowledge of having seen the circumstances in which they access transport services.
Thank you very much for that, Mr Murray. And I want to just go back on when you came into the role, which was a little way sort of into the, sort of, DLO, uh, discussion. Um, but on coming into the role, you, you actively sought to make sure roles and responsibilities were going to be clear going forward with regards to DLOs.
Actually, more broadly throughout the organisation, I think role clarity, in my background um, as a senior HR practitioner across, across a global business, um, role clarity is one of the most important things that we can give staff members and leaders. Uh, and one of the elements that I've spoken in here before about finding at Transport was that there was some level of confusion or duplication, particularly in leadership. Um, it was referred to as Transport's operating model and some lack of accountability or clarity as to where leaders needed to hand off from each other. Uh, at a staff level, individuals said they often felt as though they were doing business with themselves um, or being reviewed by the person in the cubicle three or four over, um, once they thought they had um, appropriate sign-off on the piece of work that they were undertaking. So absolutely, upon coming into the role, I set about looking at role accountability, clarity of organisational structure and the operating model. Uh, on my third month anniversary in the role, on Target, I announced that we would be going to a statewide operating model rather than a geographically based split, um, split geographies model that had been in place. And on my six-month anniversary in the role in February this year, um, I unveiled the top-line structure which is now being put into place.
Thank you very much for that. And with that sort of, um, desire for clarity or improvement of clarity, am I right, I, I just want to confirm what I think I heard in answer to one of Mrs Ward's questions. So you undertook, um, with the DLO, um, developments and reconsiderations, you undertook to provide any learnings to Premier's and Public Se- uh, Service Commission, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, it was done in the context of, uh, me wanting to ensure that the Premier's Department in particular, through Mr Draper, uh, and latterly, uh, the Public Service Commissioner, also had confidence in the work that we were doing at Transport to investigate the matter. Obviously, uh, I received the communications from the Minister's former Chief of Staff asking, uh, for Transport to review a certain set of documents. And I brought in the Chief People Officer and the Chief Legal Officer to undertake that work, given the sensitivity of the matters. I wanted that dealt with directly by senior staff and carried out as quickly as possible. But at the time, I then contacted Mr Draper and Ms Lowe, um, and advised that we would keep them informed throughout the process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs Ward.
Okay, um, just looking at the time and trying to work out how to split it, so we've got about another eight minutes for each.
Thank you, um, Mr Murray, thanks very much. I just want to clarify, um, a couple of things, um, just in relation to the, um, the statements that you spent extensive, extensive time, um, dealing with this committee. That, that's, that's literally your job, isn't it? It's literally your job to turn up to budget estimates and it is your job to be accountable to this Parliament. We, we're not querying that, are we?
No, not at all.
Thank you. Um, in relation to, I just want to give you the opportunity to clarify your evidence, just to be clear. Um, in terms of the investigation into Mr Ash and the timing, um, I think it's not correct to say that you instigated an investigation as soon as that was raised. That's not correct, is it?
As soon as I received the materials from Mr Gartrell, the following morning, I brought in Ms Taylor and Mr Britton for a meeting to instigate the investigation.
But it was not correct to say that as soon as the issues were raised, it was after the Standing Order fifty-two to the Minister's Office, the Minister had to produce documents to the House, that an investigation commenced, just in terms of the timing. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, I've been clear about when I took that action with the Chief People Officer.
Yes, because there were media reports weeks before that, um, and the investigation hadn't commenced at that time. The investigation commenced and steps were taken following the production of documents and the Standing Order fifty-two to the House. Just to be clear on, that's clear from the timeline.
Yes, and I've been clear on that.
Mm-hmm. The Daily Telegraph were raising concerns some weeks earlier and the investigation was not instigated at that time. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, I instigated the investigation upon receiving the material from Mr Gartrell,
From this.
which emanated from the Standing Order fifty-two.
Thank you. Did you ask Mr Ash, um, did you, sorry, did you ask about Mr Ash's conduct prior to the Standing Order fifty-two?
The matters were being handled at that time through the processes within Transport. I did not personally ask about those.
What does, what does that mean? What are the, what are the processes through Transport?
Well, questions were being asked, the Parliament was being asked and the Minister was responding to a number of those questions. Again, I'd have to go back over the exact timeline to look at what you were referring to. As you said, there were multiple media articles about different elements of this case.
But why didn't you ask earlier than then when there's media reports around? Why weren't you asking questions, um, prior to the documents being requested through the House?
Well, again, I'd have to check on what was being done at the time. This is now quite a long time ago in terms of the daily life of the administration of Transport for New South Wales.
So I would have thought though, if there's a media report about a DLO doing political work, um, with your extensive HR background, you would be picking up the phone to Mr Gartrell and saying, what's going on with my DLO doing polit- political work? Is that correct? Is there something we need to do?
Certainly, I had discussions with Ms Carol and Mr Collins at the time about what the history of this case had been.
What were those discussions?
I asked them what the history of this case had been.
And given that there can't have been a very long history because it was already raised in the media at that time, was that, was that immediately upon the first Daily Telegraph report or was it, um, sometime after? Or was it after the documents? And why didn't you ask Mr Gartrell, my staff members in your office, doing these allegations of him doing political work? What's the story?
Again, I'd have to check the timeline. I don't believe Mr Ash was in the office at that time.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, so you, is it, am I clear that you didn't ask, um, the Minister's Office or her Chief of Staff at that time, what was, um, what was the case with the allegations raised in the media?
As I say, these were historical matters from my recollection of my time joining Transport where I discussed them with Ms Carol and Mr Collins.
Hmm. Um, why didn't you ask Mr Gartrell?
I don't recall having that discussion with Mr Gartrell.
Yeah, so I'm asking, why didn't you?
Because Mr Ash wasn't employed in the Minister's Office at that time.
Mm-hmm. Um, alright, we talked about, um, I think there was, you made a statement earlier. I think actually Mr Gartrell was employed at the office at that time. Do you want to take that on notice and check the timing on that?
Mr Gartrell was.
Hmm.
Yes.
And Mr Ash?
I'd have to check the timing on Mr Ash's employment.
He was employed in the Minister's Office at that time. That's what the media articles were about.
Again, I'd have to double-check the timeline.
So you are the Secretary. There's media reports about a DLO. Can I just get the timelines?
No, I will hear the point of order.
Point of order, Chair. Uh, Mr Murray has said that he will check and come back with dates and times, et cetera, and, and it's now verging on badgering by Miss Ward when he's already said it's taken on notice.
Um, I will encourage, um, Mrs Ward to ask questions that are different from previous ones, um, but it is up to the witness to, um, repeat.
I'm certainly happy to clarify the timeline. If there, if there was a crossover between my joining Transport um, and Mr Ash being in the Minister's Office, it would be quite a slim one because by the time these matters were being discussed, it was certainly a historical issue that we were dealing with.
Well, um, it was a very concerning issue, wasn't it? If a DLO is doing political work and there's media articles, you would be surely picking up the phone and asking a question at some time and, um, we'd like to understand that timing. So if you can come back to us on that. I'll go, I'll move on. Um, can I take you back to your appointment, Mr Murray? I've got a couple of questions that just need clarification, um, for the purpose of the report.
Sure.
Um, so I just want to take you to the night of the election when you attended the election victory party, which is a matter of public records, no question around that. After the official function's been brought to my attention that there was a private victory party of close associates of the Premier, um, and I believe it a private residence, and Minister Halen, Halen attended that. Were you at that function?
Uh, in that event, I dropped my wife off at that event, after the event when I was helping my family members get home.
So you didn't go in at all to the private event on election night?
I think to say hello, uh, in the drop-off of my wife and then moved on from that point.
So you got out of the car when it said hello, is that how we, I just want to be clear on this?
I think so. It was a pretty late night by that stage and I was in the duty of taxi driver for my family members.
Sure. Um, the Premier said, um, well, it's an exciting night, obviously, um, with the election wins, pretty exciting night for you. Um, and I, um, I just want to be clear. So did you go inside, um, which could be taken to be attending the function? You may well have been dropping people off, but either you stayed in the car and you said goodbye to your wife or you went inside, which is it?
I went to the door and inside the house to farewell my wife and.
So congratulations.
Yeah.
Well done, Chris.
It would have been a bit strange to pull up in the driveway and drive off, so yes.
So you attended the function?
Yes.
Right.
Well, I, as I've said.
Even if it was brief, you attended.
E- even briefly. It's an exciting night, you popped in. Did you have a beer?
No.
Okay. The Premier stated following your statements that you two have never had a beer together and provided frankly, an odd definition of friendship. Um, how do you account for the differing versions of your relationship with Mr Minns?
So how is that different?
Well, he said you've never had a beer, um, you have differing accounts of the definition of relationship. I'm just wanting your comments about how the two stories differ.
So I'm not trying to be difficult, but why is my account different?
Because I'm asking, well, he said that.
That I've never had a beer. We've, I, I think he said we've never gone out for a beer and, uh, while that was somewhat, uh, chilling to read when you see that played out about yourself.
Five seconds, I'm just gonna ask this because.
No, I've never gone for a beer or a coffee with Mr Minns.
You said you were friends for twenty years. He said you weren't a friend and you hadn't had a beer. It's, um, incumbent on us to ask what's the difference in the two views. Either you've had a beer and you're friends for twenty years or you haven't. It seems they're quite, quite apart. How do you account for that?
I was asked in this very room if I was friends with him. I said I had known him. I think if, you want to go back over the transcript.
He said a friendship of twenty years.
That's right. And then when he was asked, he said we had been friendly and qualified that it, we'd never had a beer and I would add, we'd never gone for a coffee either, but, uh.
Minns said you're not.
Alright, order.
I have known him for that period. That's, that's all.
Okay, order. Have you had a top-shelf tequila maybe?
Unfortunately, no.
Um, right, excellent. Um, can I just ask one thing, coming off of the conversation we were having with, um, Ms Taylor and Ms Carol around, um, where that line sits between suggestions and directions? So, um, we know under the Act that we can't have the Minister, um, directing you in your duties, but, um, what we heard today was that it was possible to make suggestions. So for instance, you could put a candidate up for suggestion. Um, can you give us any more, you know, do you have any thoughts, I guess, around when something would become a direction? Um, and I ask this because one of the questions I asked, um, the panel before was, you know, is there a bit of a power dynamic there where you might feel obliged, um, in some circumstances to do what was being suggested? How do you guard against that? What are your thoughts around that?
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's a, it's a very real consideration in terms of the changes to the GSE Act and ensuring that everyone can. and ensuring that everyone can feel comfortable with the way that they're administered. And it's a conversation I've had with other secretaries during my time in the role. Certainly, the way other secretaries have played it out with me is that it is possible to ask for written confirmation. If a direction is being given, then simply asking, is that a direction? Could I have it in writing? Could I have more information? Does this now follow the purposes of a direction? And then being able to compare something that comes in writing much more easily than something that is set in a meeting or issued offhand, then being able to confer with colleagues. And the previous witnesses today talked about that process of legal advice. I don't so much see it as legal advice. We have a general counsel who is well-versed in the acts that we administer. I speak to him on a daily basis in regards to elements of the role, elements of our duties as an employer, elements of our engagement with the trade unions, elements of our contracts with third parties. So that dynamic is that it's always playing out in terms of seeking references against the acts based on the legal interpretation of that. So I think that if getting into a grey area is where that element would come out and certainly speaking to secretaries state and federal who've had to deal with elements of ministerial direction and clarifying, is this a direction? And how does that then work against the acts that the secretary is solely responsible to deploy? That's how that then gets clarified.
So once you've got that in writing, I guess you can then say, well, actually no, under this particular, you know, the particular issue here, I'm not permitted to take your direction. I will make my own decision. Then I guess that will then result in something, you know, more needing to be recorded to ensure that you are seen to be making the decision yourself, I guess.
And that's right, and that can be uncomfortable if it's elements where the Minister does not have the ability to make directions. In an element like the Transition Office, which was explored earlier today, the ability to direct the organisation to do certain things, to carry out certain activities, is very much within the government's purview in terms of enforcing government policy. In terms of who can be hired into the roles that I am responsible for, that is very much the Secretary's purview.
So if somebody was, I guess if a Minister was suggesting to a, to a secretary that they do a particular thing that, you know, that they're not permitted to direct them on and the secretary responded with, is that a direction? You know, a smart Minister would say no, it's not a direction, it's just a strong suggestion. It puts, it must put you in a difficult position. And we are talking hypotheticals, but I.
I think that very hypothetical is the foundation of the Westminster system, which is the challenge and the tension that secretaries need to be able to sustain and to ensure that the right decisions are being taken under the acts in which they're responsible for and that they can seek appropriate advice. Central government exists to also provide that advice through, say, the Cabinet Office. So there is an ongoing cycle of information there if there were uncomfortable requests being made. But it has, throughout Australia's history, been occasions where secretaries have asked for that documented evidence and been very forceful in terms of how that needs to be recommended or referred back to government, which is usually, yes, there may be a debate, but that's what the process is for.
Thank you. Back to the government.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you again, Mr Murray. We've canvassed here times that you've encountered Labour politicians and in fact a lot has been made of that over the different hearings. Have you also encountered politicians of other parties in your time in the private sector?
Thank you for the question. I guess a lot has been made in the last eight months about my history in terms of not something I've ever sought to hire, which was my time with the CAR and YEMMA governments. Clearly, I met a lot of people during that period, people who've continued to work in fields like government or infrastructure, the same areas that I have worked. But I certainly have left here in 2008 and for the next fifteen years occupied a pretty low-profile approach to a role that had nothing to do with government services. I didn't go based on my government experience to do the following role. It was something where I joined a business that had only just really started in Australia and was trying to bring its international reputation to the Australian market and was looking for a diverse group of people to come on board to start that up. But certainly over that period, just based upon governments that had come to power and were governing during that period, my engagement then was more often with conservative governments here and in the UK than it was any other persuasion. So, yes, I have met with politicians from both sides of the House all the way through that time period. As I say, most of that was probably in the UK. I attended ten Downing Street for a meeting with then-Prime Minister Theresa May about housing supply and the ability for the construction industry to move faster into providing housing supply. Here in Australia, I met with Minister Henskens around skills and in fact showed him around Central Station when it was just an excavation, when it doesn't look like it certainly looks now in terms of the metro. And Mr Farlow and I have also had a coffee many years ago in The Rocks, a very pleasant coffee.
Not a beer?
Not a beer and not a tequila, no.
That doesn't count.
It's literally his job.
So yes, I have met with many people. I have not sought to have a political career after leaving here in 2008, but I was very privileged to be able to put my hand up in May last year when this job was advertised and I feel very lucky to be doing it.
Thank you. Can I ask about legal advice? You referenced it and many people throughout the day have. Would you say that the act of seeking advice does not necessarily suggest a problem, only that an official is wanting to be, to do a good job, to do their diligence and ensure that the right processes, procedures etcetera are followed?
I wouldn't want it to be misconstrued that seeking advice, be it from our legal department or our chief counsel or any of the other technical specialists, for example, or policy specialists throughout Transport, was anything other than absolutely par for the course as a daily action. I mentioned before that I am constantly in dialogue with the Chief Legal Officer about a range of issues, including operational, not just related to, say, court cases or dispute matters, but also in relation to the administration of the acts that relate to the transport portfolio and how the organisation needs to be set up to fulfil those requirements. In regards to policy expertise or safety expertise, they are also people who I am regularly calling on for advice in terms of the elements that we're constantly delivering in the public transport marketplace, making sure that all of those elements have been considered. And that when I do appear before estimates or the Parliament in terms of review sessions like this one, that that can be justified. And I know that the committee has certainly been keen to point out if those elements haven't been fulfilled and I will certainly continue to chase those up.
Thank you. And just following on from questions from Ms Boyd, do you feel you would be comfortable telling a Minister if you could not follow a direction, if you didn't think it was appropriate?
Yes, absolutely. I, in my last role, I worked side by side with the owner of a six billion dollar company who had created that with his own hands from scratch, being a labourer on the Elizabeth Line, sorry, on the Victoria Line in London, pushing carts of spoil up a hill and had created his entire global company out of that one piece. Now, if you want to talk about speaking truth to power, having a conversation with him about something that he couldn't do or wouldn't do was a fairly robust occasion. And I think I used that exact reference during my job interview when asked the same question.
Can I just elaborate on that, Mr Murray? Because you went over the mechanics of getting it in writing. Presumably, the utility of that is, if you're directing me to do this, I need you to take responsibility for it by putting it in writing and then I may or may not do it, but you're on the hook. But if you're not going to put it in writing, then I reserve the right to assert myself as a secretary to make the decision in accordance with my responsibilities. And that would be the case regardless of the political persuasion of the Minister at the time, wouldn't it?
Well, that's correct. And ministers do put directions in writing all the time, particularly when it comes to the expenditure of funds or signing a briefing note. I mean, that is putting a direction in writing. If it comes at a time where there is a conflict between what the secretary believes needs to be done and the Minister, then you may seek that further written evidence so it can be tested as to what other elements under law might be at play.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got about five minutes left. Let's just go for the five minutes and see what happens.
Yes, I'll try to keep it to the five minutes. I know we were going to ask Mr Murray if he'd be kind enough to stay. I will endeavour to get through them as quickly as I can, Chair, but I'm just hoping to get through those. I'll endeavour to do so. Thank you. Mr Murray, earlier today, there's a document that we were going to be provided with the index number. I'm just wondering how we're going on that, on the legal advice.
I don't have the index number, but I am advised that the document that you've queried is in fact in the return.
Yes, but we were, an undertaking was provided that the document number in the index would be provided to assist us to clarify that.
Again, sorry, I do not have that.
Yes, but it was taken on notice or the undertaking was given that it would be produced today so that we could assist the committee to get on. I don't want to have to recall anybody or come back through. Can we get that information today? Or are you able to get it?
Well, if it comes to me before the end of these hearings, I will absolutely share it with you. It wasn't my action.
Could you ask perhaps if we can get that document number? If it's been produced, there's no issue there, we just want the index number.
Sure.
The document, thank you. Just in relation to the DLOs, so is the current Sydney Metro Head of Communications still a DLO in the Transport Minister's office?
No.
Okay, where is that person now?
That person has resumed their substantive position.
Yes, back as the Head of Comms for Sydney Metro?
That's my understanding.
Is that the fact or you don't doubt that?
I don't doubt that.
You say it's your understanding it's the case?
That's right, but the person doesn't report to me, therefore I would have to check it. But I have no evidence that that person is not doing that wrong.
Okay, given that Sydney Metro is going to be opening, I would have thought they need their head of comms back doing that, so that's probably a good thing. What are the New South Wales?
Just ask quickly, and when did that occur, Mr Murray?
I believe that happened in December last year.
Thank you.
What are the New South Wales Government's core values, Mr Murray?
I would have to take that on notice, Ms Ward, in terms of the New South Wales Government's core values.
Yeah. All right, I might be able to help. The answer is integrity, trust, accountability and service. How do you think the conduct and process surrounding the DLO appointments compare to these core values?
Can I just?
Well, I've got two minutes.
Order.
Well, I've got, I've got three minutes too. Can I just ask you to please clarify whether or not these questions come within our terms of reference?
It's the Public Accountability Committee. It is the process surrounding these.
Asking a question on the DLO appointments.
It's the principles, public expectations and requirements. I mean, it's not a trick question.
To the extent it's related to DLOs, it's permitted.
So how do you think the conduct and process surrounding the DLO appointments compare to these core values?
As I've said in this session today and previously, I think that there are areas where we can tighten up the administration. That's what the, they're the actions that I've put in place through my colleagues since coming into the role in Transport.
All right, so do you think they accord with those core values? Or there's, I don't want to paraphrase your words, but they may not have and there's work to be done, which you've undertaken to accord with those values, is that?
I think we should be careful that an investigation was conducted by Transport based on a referral that was received from the Minister's office and that was followed through to the conclusion that we've discussed here today. In terms of other appointments, other DLOs, of which there have been many, other arrangements that have been queried by this committee, while I think the questions have been appropriate, there has been no other allegation or finding that would warrant this sort of concern, broad concern about values that you've put forward. And certainly the people that I have met since joining Transport, it's absolutely blown me away with the quality of the character across the organisation.
Yeah, thank you, but I'll just redirect in relation to that specific one. I don't think it's accurate to say there's been an outcome, the findings of the investigation into Mr Ash were not made public. They haven't been discussed and Mr Ash has since been afforded the opportunity to resign. So it hasn't really resulted in something that accords with those values. I guess that's what I'm trying to get to. Nonetheless, I'll move on.
Sorry, if I could just clarify, Transport has very clear processes which accord with the public sector codes of conduct and the requirements of investigating individuals if there are allegations outside of those. That has absolutely been followed through in the way it would be done for any other employee that was facing similar investigations.
Prior to your appointment, the Minister's office requested to be appointed to the non-partisan DLO roles in her office, the head of the Baumane Labour campaign, a former Young Labour president, a former Labour candidate and Labour Head Office staffer and you, who donated to her campaign. What confidence can you provide this committee that this potential conflict or potential abuse will not continue?
Certainly in relation to my appointment, as you've just characterised it, the witnesses even today have said that a full merit process with no interference was run for that role and that was my experience. The other appointments predate my time in the role.
So you don't provide any confidence to this committee that that wouldn't occur again?
I have spoken already to this committee about the steps that I've personally put in place and reinforced with my team, the changes I've made to my team about accountability that relate to all of these areas and the oversight for DLO appointments to ministerial offices.
Order, I understand, so it's three o'clock, there's two things here. I understand Dr Kane's seeking the call, but also I need to ask you, Mr Murray, if you would be open to staying. How long do you think you need?
Ten, fifteen minutes depending on, ten minutes?
A maximum of fifteen minutes?
Chair, as I said at the last time I appeared, I am willing to. I will stay today if it pleases the committee.
Thank you, we'll try and be as quick as we can. I'll go to Dr Kane quickly and then I'll come back to Ms Ward.
Mr Murray, are you aware that across Ministers' offices during the previous government, there were DLOs working with connections to the Liberal Party?
Point of order, Chair, this is not within the remit of this witness and also it's not within the remit of the terms of reference.
Oh, it's just that you went back before Mr Murray started, so I thought that was, we were allowed to get a question, ask an opinion of what happened.
Okay.
Where it goes in relation to these terms of reference.
I have said at this hearing previously in my first appearance here that in my relatively short time of being back in government, I have met people who have got history with both sides of politics, with all sides of politics rather, and I have enormous respect for anyone who puts their hand up to serve in a public sector position. And I do find that they are among the most committed to driving for public services. So I would take every person on their merits, but I'm certainly aware that people do often work in a political context and get a taste for public service. It's exactly how I found myself applying for this role last year.
Thank you, Mr Murray.
Ms Ward.
Thank you, Mr Murray. I just find it curious that there's some lack of clarity around certain elements of what happened last year and clarity around others. But nonetheless, I just wanted to be clear on your time since you have been Secretary and your role in regard to public sector recruitment, how do you define public duty?
In regards to public sector recruitment, we have a very set-out, systemised process around role descriptions, the values of Transport and the requirements of the role, Mrs Ward. And that is what I rely on in the advice from my team in terms of taking those elements on board in terms of public sector recruitment. It's not the Secretary's role to recruit for roles that don't report to the Secretary. So I have to ensure that there is a machine that takes care of our public sector recruitment and that is set up to deliver on all of those elements. But I can only talk to the processes that I've been involved in where it has been very clear about the role, the capabilities and capacities that sit against the role requirement. the capabilities and capacities that sit against the role requirements and the transport-led codes that sit as part of that, which are all documented in those processes.
Okay, so going to those processes or your potential for appointment of DLOs. On reflection, if um in future, cases like the one raised through this inquiry and media reports surrounding DLO appointments, and it's potentially following up from um the Chair's question, um, if there were questions around that or um potential conflicts, what steps would you take?
Well, as I've detailed today, we have greater infrastructure in terms of the um people and culture or HR processes that are in place, the supervision, which I think is the main element here that we needed to reinforce. Um, and being able to talk clearly to any DLO candidates that they always had the ability to raise a concern and flag if there was ever any of these grey or ambiguous elements in terms of the administration of their role. Um, I think by clarifying that throughout the team and the, the senior manager that looks after DLO appointments and the way that they are now referred through, there is a higher awareness of those areas of ambigu, ambiguity and ensuring that that doesn't happen.
Mm-hmm. I think you spoke earlier about um a lack of clarity and about your um intention to put more accountability into roles, um, if I'm paraphrasing. Um, but DLOs have always had to be apolitical, haven't they? There's never been any lack of clarity around being apolitical. It's an, um, the role uh is very clear that that's, you're not there as a partisan political appointment. That's correct, isn't it?
That's right.
So did you want to just clarify that, 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 that doesn't apply or hasn't been unclear in the past? The role of a DLO is very clearly to be apolitical, isn't it?
That's right.
And that has not changed over time?
No.
Correct, thank you. Um, so on reflection, um, sorry, moving on, then I guess.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? Is that okay? We're in joint time, aren't we?
We are in joint time.
So just on that, Mr. Murray, where do you draw the line as a secretary with this? Because presumably everyone's got a political view and a political stance um right throughout society. So i- is it not the case that at some point in time, a decision has to be made about someone's ability to divorce themselves from their political views and carry out their public service duty? I mean, where, how do you draw the line practically on this stuff?
It is very difficult and I believe it's probably why the Premier Circular has remained the central administration document for the appointment of DLOs. Um, you will have seen from the elements that Ms. Taylor discussed this morning that we have sought to go a little bit further than that in asking people if there are political elements of their personal life or their background that they wish to declare in terms of a conflict of interest. Um, you've also heard from Ms. Lowe and previously from Mr. Draper and um uh Mr. Duncan, that it would be improper to ask people to declare uh political backgrounds as part of any kind of shortlisting process or review of their ability to do the job, that that would be against the public sector principles. So we do have to walk a fine line between uh assisting people with consideration of conflict of interest and making sure that everyone has the ability to work in the New South Wales public sector, providing that they uh understand the rules and follow those through.
Declaration and transparency being the keys.
That's right.
Can I follow on from that? Um, and that's helpful. But in the role itself, it's very clear that political work in a minister's office is not to be carried out by a DLO. That's not in any way unclear, is it?
No, that's on the second page text of the handbook. It's the, in the opening um segment of the handbook.
Don't do political work when you're a DLO on secondment to a minister's office. That's not in any way unclear, is it?
That's right.
That hasn't changed over time. It's always been the way.
That's right.
Correct. Um, thank you. How are we going with the document number?
Well, Mrs. Ward, I'm sorry, I don't have that to hand. I'm here answering the questions. I can't also administer this at the same time.
Well, Mr. Murray, are you avoiding providing the document number? Your staff have already undertaken to provide that document number.
I will hear the point of order.
The point of order is both Mr. Murray and previous witnesses have rightly said they didn't have the information to hand, but will provide it on notice. Um, I didn't think it was customary to then badger subsequent witnesses to provide something which has already been taken on notice. Although we may have an update.
The undertaking was to provide it today. I'm just following up to see where that is.
Okay.
I'm advised that we don't have the number as yet because of the volume of documents that has been provided and we're working towards that. But I'm sorry, I don't have that for you right now.
When do you think that might be able to be provided to the committee, Mr. Murray?
We will provide it as soon as we have it.
All right, could you provide it by the end of business today, given if we are to let you go and we're not having a hearing tomorrow? So you've got the day freed up um tomorrow. We don't have the hearing day. Are you able to provide that by five o'clock today?
I can only assure you that we will provide it as soon as we have it. My understanding is sixty thousand documents have been provided by Transport.
They're not all, I know, I've been through most of them, but um not all are privileged. And so this is very clearly a legal advice document that I think Mr. Britton or others could identify fairly quickly within the resources that you have. And not all of those documents are, a, a claim of privilege was made over everything. A lot of claims were made, uh, but not over that. Um, I don't think it's hard to identify the legal advice.
Attempt to delay or hide this. I will personally ensure that it's provided to you as soon as we have the number. I'm not personally aware of the number or the document as it was covered in an earlier session.
Seems, all right. Well, we'd appreciate you providing that to the committee um at your latest opportunity. Um, some documents have been very delayed. A number of claims have been made um over them. We have persisted in obtaining those and we thank you for your assistance with those and it would be helpful to find this last one.
I, I want to assure the House, because this has been raised in estimates as well, that Transport has no interest in holding back documents when the House has asked for those to be put through public interest. What we have been concerned about is just the personal information of staff being caught up in those processes. So where there have been delays, I assure the House, it is sixty thousand documents and the personal information of phone numbers and email addresses and other things that are usually covered by that personal interest privilege.
Yeah, you, you would be aware though that a number of those claims have been um knocked out by the independent arbiter, who you said they are not valid claims, um, and a number of the privileged claims were also knocked out. Um, and you'd also be aware, Mr. Murray, that a number of the documents were produced very late um in the piece, up to a month later than the time required for production to the House. Um, will you endeavour to do better in relation to future standing water fifty twos in timely production?
I'm, I'm happy to take the question. A- absolutely. We want to do better. This is not core business, producing sixty thousand documents over such a short period. I agree with you. There have been some delays, some documents were missed. That has happened under previous governments as well. I've been assured of that. Uh, I'm aware of the arbiter's rulings and that is absolutely the role of the arbiter in this case. We will abide by all of those measures.
So in that vein, that's why I'm following up that document in the vein of us both trying to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will just clarify on behalf of the committee um that we did vacate tomorrow's um hearing date because we did not have um witnesses and were able to accommodate you today. So um that was the reason for that. So that concludes our hearing um for today. Thank you very much um for staying later as well, um, Mr. Murray. Um, to the extent that questions were taken on notice, it'll be twenty-one days, but the committee secretary at, no, not twenty-one days. Seven days. I'm so sorry. I've been saying it wrong all day. Right? Oh, we haven't. Okay, good. Uh, anyway, the committee secretary will be in touch, but that's, uh, that's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.